The agenda was set up. We have dune grading at the end of the evening after several issues having to do with single pieces of property. If you came to have a say on the dune grading issue, would you raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Let me try again. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 or so, maybe 12. Okay, thank you. If you came to have a say on dune grading only for the purpose of making sure that you were a party to the proceedings and would get all the future notifications, would you raise your hand again? Nobody, okay. Okay. I think I'll stay with the present agenda unless there are objections. Okay. In that case, we've got about 15 seconds before the hour. It'll start up pretty soon. Okay, in the absence of any objections, can we approve the agenda by consent? Okay, that is approved. I don't remember whether I had any substantive changes to the minutes. Nothing. Did anybody have anything they wanted to change in the minutes?
I was not here.
Yes.
Oh, are you listed as having been here?
No.
Oh, okay. Joe? I've got a few typos, but I can just give those to all the shy men too before.
There's one point where I'm quoted as having referred to a deck, three-season room in Idaho, and it should have been in Ohio.
Oh.
I know, it's only four letters.
Pardon me. Yes, thank you. I should have caught that. I remember seeing that. It would have been on the house that's on Hemlock in the residential streets. Okay, anything else? In the absence of any objection, then we will approve the minutes by consent. First item is a public hearing in consideration of SR 18-02, sorely request for a setback reduction in conjunction with remodel of an existing dwelling at 595 North Beach Street, on which I will excuse myself because I am not only in the notification area, I live directly across the street from that address. So, Daryl, if you would do the honors.
The applicant, Vito Sorelli, on behalf of Susan and Marcia Strauss, is requesting a setback, a reduction to permit a six-foot-by-six-inches side yard setback in conjunction with the remodel of the existing dwelling. The property is located at 595 North Beach, tax lot 2300, MAP 51020 CB, in residential medium-density zone. The property is owned by Strauss, revocable living trust municipal code section 17-14-04B-4, standard request for a minimum 15-foot side yard setback on the corner lot. The request would be reviewed against municipal code section 17 dot 64 dot 010 setback reduction. Is there a staff report?
Yes, this application is on Northern Beach Street. This is a side yard setback. The reason for the setback is not because the addition approaches further horizontally into the setback area, it's because the roof will rise, including that portion of the roof within the setback area. Height limit's not implicated, the roof rises below that, but the roof, the whole roofline rises to accommodate the addition, and that rise includes the portion of the roof that's in the, encroaching into the setback area. So this doesn't go further horizontally, it goes up slightly within the setback area, hence the application that's reported tonight. This should all sound vaguely familiar because this is really almost identical to one that you heard in the winter in Oakmont Park, which was essentially the same thing. It was a remodel, roof raising, they weren't approaching further horizontally, but the house already encroached and the roof rise was in the encroachment area. So it's a very similar situation to that. The drawings that the applicant submitted, particularly the kind of asymmetric drawings, show that encroachment pretty well, how that section of the roof rises up, and you can see the portion of it that's in the setback area. These criteria are familiar to you? There was no correspondence on this. The only information I have is the application itself and the site that's on my set that I took. Based on what I know so far, I would recommend approval on this, but you should hold a public hearing and reach a decision on it.
Okay. Does anyone object to the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commissioner member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commissioner member had an ex parte contact? Okay, then the pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, and evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, and evidence. Persons who testify shall first be recognized by the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant? No. I made a site visit.
What's that?
I made a site visit.
Subject, yeah.
Me too.
Me too.
Vito Sorelli, 31897 Maxwell Lane, Arch Cape, Oregon, 97102. And mostly up here, just to follow up on what Mark Barnes mentioned and give any clarification if there's questions. The existing footprint of the building is going to remain the same in the, that's encroaching the setback line. So the only request that we're asking for is to raise the portion of the roof approximately one and a half to two feet from its existing. The current roofline's very low, it's a side storage room that we're going to convert to a master bedroom and need the headroom in doing so. So if you look at exhibit three and four on the isometric, you can see the existing above and then the proposed below, where it would extend the existing roof from the west over this addition, or the existing structure on the east that's encroaching. And this would amount for the approximate one and a half to two-foot climb in elevation.
I'm not exactly clear what you're actually adding here. You're also adding room space, right?
Room space is added to the south side, which is permissible and not encroaching any setbacks, so that meets all current standards. The only square footage is being added is exactly in that shaded area on the backside, the south side of the property, which meets the side yard and the rear yard in this case setback. The only setback reduction we're seeking is to raise the current roof line by the one foot six inches. On the, that would be on the northeast corner of the property.
Well, I guess what I'm not clear about is, there are no measurements here indicate where 15 feet from the road line.
So the current, maybe it was a previous set, but the current building footprint is seven foot six inches from the street property line on, that would be on Sixth Street. So currently, that, off Sixth Street, we need a 15-foot setback, so it encroaches six foot six inches. So we're asking to raise the volume in that area, not actually add any additional square footage into the setback, but just increase the roof height within that area by one foot six inches.
I see, the room itself.
It already exists there, correct?
The roof overhangs.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All righty. Are there any other presentations by proponents?
Robert Lundie, VO Box 1357, Kennedy. I'm not advocating for this issue, but I do want to say that as the person who is next most affected by it, I don't oppose it. I think that the people who would probably be most affected, may be more affected than me, are the gerodics who live behind the applicants, and they don't seem to have registered any objections. The area affected is my direct view across the street from my office on the first floor of my home, and I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna interfere with any oceans or views or mountain views or anything like that.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Okay, is there any additional staff response?
None here.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
Well, I think it's a reasonable request. This is just a small amount of raise up, they're not encroaching any farther into the setback.
No proponents, no opposed.
There was no one who complained, it just seems to me that it's very reasonable and well thought out.
I agree.
I particularly appreciate, and I want to just make a public statement here, that this applicant isn't trying to push out and run some crazy argument about the need for all this extra space to intrude on the setback, and was meticulous about making sure that the space, living space, was within the setback.
I agree. I move we approve it.
Second?
Go call.
Monsieur Benson?
Yes.
Monsieur Whitley?
Yes.
Monsieur Burr?
Yes.
Monsieur Kerr?
Yes.
Monsieur Bennett?
Yes.
Next is a public hearing in consideration of V 18-03, O'Brien request for parking variance for an existing commercial building at 273 Beaver Street. The applicant, Ely O'Brien, is requesting a parking variance to allow four off-street parking spaces in conjunction with the remodel of an existing commercial building. The property is located at 273 Beaver Street, tax lot 5300, MAP 51020 CB, and in a limited commercial C1 zone. The property is owned by O'Brien and Company LLC. Municipal code section 17.78.050, off-street parking requires a minimum of seven off-street parking spaces for this location. The request will be reviewed against the municipal code section 17.84.030, variances criteria for granting. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Has any commission member made a site visit? Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is an off-street parking variance, you don't hear a lot of them, but you did hear one not long ago. You'll recall that the criteria for an off-street parking variance are different than they are for any other types of variances, the criteria here in the staff report. The parking situation at this site's a little bit unusual. The existing parking lot serves two businesses. Some of those spaces are devoted by a permanent easement to the Harding Trading Company, a food eatery to the east of this site. The variance does not count those, correctly does not count those towards meeting this site's parking needs. The reasons that make this potentially approvable are a couple things. One is, this is a situation where you might be able to make the case that two uses can share parking because their hours are somewhat offset. This comes up a lot in planning, or kind of the classic example is a movie theater and office building where there really is almost no overlap of their hours. This one's a little different, that the Harding Trading Company, at least these days, is open primarily for dinner, and the office use would be primarily eight to five.
I think only for dinner. I think only for, from four o'clock.
Yeah, I think that's right. The O'Brien office would be primarily used eight to five, say. So there is that, the uses primarily don't overlap, although there certainly is some potential for overlap and maybe potential for future overlap. The other part of this that, to me, makes some sense is that our parking standards, which are tied to the square footage of the use, don't really distinguish between high-intensity uses and low-intensity commercial uses. And I put a little table on page two there that kind of lists the extremes there. We put the same standard for, say, a government office building and a convenience store, which generates, you know, many, many times more trips and has a similar, larger parking demand. So our standards don't differentiate between intensive and less intensive uses. The proposed office use is at the less intensive end of the spectrum compared to, say, a retail business or a restaurant for that matter. And then finally, Beaver Street is, connects to arterials, but it's a relatively quiet side street, but has in the past accommodated far larger traffic and parking loads, particularly when the school was going. There was a lot of activity, as you can imagine, at the beginning of school day and the end of the school day when there were buses and parents picking up kids. So Beaver Street, at least as it stands right now, is relatively lightly used compared to, say, Hemlock or Spruce. So those factors would tend to support the parking variance. The factors that don't are the ones that you can easily imagine. O'Brien Construction does have business, and they do have customers, and they do have employees, and those people all have to park their vehicles somewhere, they're likely to not be walking to the site necessarily. There's just no reason to believe a large proportion of them are walking to the site, particularly their employees may be out in the field and moving employees to off-site work sites. So this is not necessarily a use that is making no demands on the parking, but it generally is at the lower end of the spectrum, I think. If you can find that the proposal meets all three of those criteria, and bear in mind that the third criterion actually has three sub-criteriums, I believe more like eight criteria here, then you should approve it. You should also know that that easement is a permanent easement, as I understand it, shows up on title, so that's not likely to change. There's really nothing that you or they can do about that, as I understand it.
Did the conversion of the upper floor from apartments to office trigger this?
Yes, yeah. The prior use was residential upstairs and.
And that changes the number of spaces?
Changes the equation entirely. The previous use also had, I talked to them many times, they had a complicated grandfathered situation with their existing parking, and it was not a simple calculation. But in a nutshell, yes, the change of use triggers this, and the previous use, residential, commercial, had a different and lower parking demand.
And is there only a problem for that one hour a day between four and five? There's enough parking spaces, including the Harding spaces, the rest of the time, except for that one conflict when they overlap? Is that right?
Well, I haven't actually gone out and surveyed that hour to find out if that's the case. But the numbers in the situation somewhat imply that, but no, I haven't done any field work.
But given, okay, let's just say Harding is only open from four to nine, like it says.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, and that the business is open eight to five, does that mean that there are enough parking spaces except for that one hour a day?
No, there are not. The Harding needs those three spaces when they're open.
Right, so for, except for, between four and five.
Except for that hour.
There are enough parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay. And they're not expanding their footprint at all?
No.
They're remodeling the interior?
There's an exterior remodel that involves a deck.
Okay, but that has nothing to do with the parking, they're not infringing?
Correct, that doesn't count for parking. I should also add that this is a, the exterior remodeling is a DRB matter, so defer to their authority on that point.
Okay.
With Harding's property, how many spots are required in this? I know for a restaurant, you need to have so many spaces.
It's based on their square footage, and I believe the three meets their needs per our code, but I actually haven't redone the calculation.
Okay. I thought it was how many, what your capacity was.
No, it's based on square footage, and it's gross. Now, it's not big, Harding is not a large space, so their parking calculation comes out relatively small. I should also add that even though Harding, right now, operates as a dinner spot, there's nothing in our code that prevents them from opening up as a breakfast and lunch spot also, which would.
In fact, I thought they did that at one time.
They, well, I think under prior ownership, it was open for coffee in the morning, but there's nothing that, in our code, that would prevent that from going back that way. So even though they don't conflict now, they potentially could in the future.
Maybe before we get too deep in the weeds here, we ought to hear the proponents' case.
Is there more of the staff report?
No, that's all I have, and there is no new correspondence on this.
Thank you. Moving ahead. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. This has popped into my head several times, so I'll say it now. If anybody hasn't muted their cellphone, would you please? This is the call for public testimony. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Vito Sorelli, 31897 Maxwell Lane, Arch Cape, Oregon. I'm here on behalf of O'Brien and Company in the new office space on Beaver Street. And to follow up on Mark's presentation, we've gone back and forth with him on a number of scenarios, one being working with Harding and Trading on a joint parking arrangement, and two, to kind of expand upon what Mark brought up, is looking at the square footage of actually like occupiable space within this existing building. So we're not changing the footprint, but due to the parking counts and zoning code of the 400 per square foot, or the 400, one parking space for every 400 square feet, it would be required to have seven spaces on the site. If we do a joint agreement with Harding and Trading, we do achieve that seven, and we also have supplied ADA parking space for both spaces. The other way we looked at it was designing the space, so the current design of the interior footprint, the office spaces, the common area, the kitchen, if you equate that square footage of actually occupiable office spaces divided by the 400 per square foot, we end up needing four spaces. So we've worked on using the existing footprint and designing the interior space to meet the zoning codes of Cana Beach. So instead of looking at the full gross area, we're looking at the net as well, if that makes sense. So we've looked at it two ways. One, as working with Harding and Trading, we've talked to Jane and Victor about this common agreement, and their future plans, though, could change. Currently, our evening operations, ours are primarily during the daytime, and also sharing that space was beneficial in their mind as well as ours. And in, even though we don't own those three spaces, the other option, because we've gone back and forth with Mark Barnes, was looking at how to design the interior space to have the net area equal four spaces which we are providing, so.
So what is the net area?
The net area is right around 1,200 square feet of.
What do you define as net?
I'm using, so all office spaces, all common meeting rooms, the common kitchen, I've excluded the garage, the laundry room, storage space, I've taken out the square footage that wouldn't necessarily have an occupant using that space. So I'm calling that the net occupiable area of 1,200 square feet.
So if you submitted the application on that basis, you wouldn't need to be here, right?
Well, it's not how the code's read, it's read by gross, so it's looked at, so, and we're, this, you know, space, we're kind of, we bought in and are moving into a space that was existing, so we've looked at how to design the space that could be approvable if you looked at the actual occupiable space within the building versus having, you know, three or four other office spaces and more people using the building. So we've kind of taken two approaches, one with Harding and Trading, and one, looking at the interior space and how to work those calculations.
Do you know how many employees work in the office for O'Brien?
There, it, so there's a junction office up at 26 and 101 that has a lot of contractors. Currently, there's around four to five people in the second-to-large office. It varies because some are contractors that are in the field, depending on jobs throughout the year, but design staff and managers, typically four to five people on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Don't run away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Primarily, will this be a place where potential clients show up and look over designs that your firm is developing for?
It could be, it's more, yeah, management, there's design offices, so there will be some client meetings throughout the months, but primarily management offices and workspace.
Like, on a, on a slow, either Wednesday or Thursday this week, I can't. Like, on a, on a slow, either Wednesday or Thursday this week, I can't remember now, afternoon, around 4:30, I guess, three of the four spots that you have here were filled by your employees or pickups and so forth and so on.
Today was a rare, there was an all-staff safety meeting, so there-
This was either yesterday or-
So, the last couple of days have been an all-staff safety meeting, so there's been contractors from the valley, from the beach, so there was an unusual amount of people in town these last couple of days. But typically, at four to five, at the Cana Beach Second and Large office, there's usually anywhere from two to four cars, or people still working there at those hours. This was just happened to be an unusual safety meeting.
Do you have any remorse about taking up, transforming all that affordable housing into an office complex?
Well-
I couldn't resist, sorry.
Actually, I have something that I was gonna say, I should probably ask you. Will you come back up? I was thinking this was gonna come in later. I'm looking at drawing DR 1.8, the area plan for the second floor, and we've got four offices there with seven chairs, suggests to me, and that's, you know, not including the break room, suggests to me that whoever did the drawing at least was contemplating there being seven people working on that floor.
These, no, I mean, we have, so we have a lot of phone calls, so some of them are used as breakout phone rooms, and the way these drawings are illustrated are the use of components due to our drawing programs that put a desk and a chair in. So, if you have a desk, a chair drops in, so there's not gonna be the, I don't know, total of 12 people working at this office. Currently, if you go to Second and Large, there's three to four people, typically max, in that, in that upper office. And then, and then the contractors, since the junction has been remodeled, a lot of the construction management is up at the junction office as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents? Is there a staff response?
No.
Okay, does the applicant wish to make any additional statements? I don't see any reason to think that the hearing is being continued, so the public hearing is closed and we move to consideration.
You know, my, my concern is that this area may not, on a typical day in April, be a super busy street, and there may not be a lot of cars parked about. But it wasn't very long ago, which, where we were discussing parking around another group pub, and it was, it was quite contentious, because it seemed as if the parking that was required by the city, according to code, didn't really deal with the overflow problem that was invading several streets away from, from that particular group pub. And I have a similar kind of concern about this. As Mark admits, the restaurant is, could become anything, well, anything that would fit on that small space. We don't really know what's going to happen with the old-school buildings across the street, although I can anticipate that there might be demand for more parking here. But even during the, in the regular, you know, tourista period of Cana Beach life, there's a lot of cars infiltrating this area and parking in this area, as well as just trying to drive through and find out where Hemlock Street is. And when I look at this, this office complex, the chairs all make it look as if, you know, they're running a New York sweatshop. But even so, there, there are five offices in this complex, and a couple of, and a meeting room at least. And we have, we have a lot of space here, and I, I just anticipate there's gonna be more than two or three people working in this, in this complex and looking for parking spots. So, I'm not, I'm not so keen on a four, four parking spot. Variance here. In fact, I think maybe the going together with, look at the restaurant, Harding's, in some ways, makes more sense. I don't know why that didn't happen, but, but there's a lot of bodies potentially coming through here, you know, and maybe with sheer accident, I show up to for a spot 4:30 in the afternoon, you know, on a, on Wednesday, and, you know, there's no place for me to park the car. So, I, I kind of wonder about what's gonna happen when it's up and running, and, you know, when the sweatshops are grinding out designs and the clients are being lured into, you know, the presentations and buying off on the designs and worrying about where they park their car.
Well, do you think there's any way to ensure, I mean, if they make a deal with Harding, that they can use those three spots until four o'clock, then they're really only out of compliance for one hour? And not that many people go out to eat dinner in a kind of nice restaurant at four o'clock, unless they're maybe 90 years old, but, you know. You know, so, so I'm just saying that, I think that-
Well, that's my point, is-
If they could make that deal with Harding-
Would make more sense than restricting the city, essentially, to a deal that can be, who knows what.
And, and I guess, there is no deal with Harding now, is that what you understand?
I don't know. I mean, that was, that was the suggestion. That, there was a back and forth about that.
There is a deal.
Oh, there is a deal with Harding?
I should make something clear that I thought I did earlier, but I probably-
All right.
It's news that there is a deal with Harding, that was in the works, but that doesn't change the question before you. A lot of codes are written, so that if you get the deal, you don't have to get a variance. In our play, in our code, there is no provision for a deal. You still would need the variance, but the deal might influence your decision on the variance.
Right.
And is there a way that we could say that if they chose to open up at different hours, that we would revisit it?
After they've remodeled?
Boy, no, once they, once they've remodeled, then we've issued a business license for that location. I think we've made a commitment, I think, at that point.
I mean, if, the way the combination is with these two companies, it would, it would work, but if either of those two companies changed into something else, then I think we're in some trouble in terms of spaces, particularly if this were a different type of commercial retail outlet there.
Can we ask what kind of deal they have? Is it just verbal, or?
No, to reopen the record. Yeah, go ahead and reopen the hearing if you want to find out.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. The hearing, the hearing is magically reopened, or magisterially or something. Okay. Could you clarify about what's going on with this?
So, yeah, so currently, it is a verbal agreement with Harding and Trading. We talked to Jane and Victor about the use of sharing the spaces. They were in favor of it, from our perspective, using their spaces during the day, and then them having more space in the evening, because they said they're underparked during their business hours. Also, like I pointed out before, we would be providing an ADA parking space that would be used for both, both businesses, so that was another factor that they appreciated as well. So, so right now, just verbal, but they agreed upon it.
Can we approve this with the condition of that agreement being in place?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I've got another question that I forgot to add.
You mean a written agreement, actually?
Yes, yes. This is a matter of curiosity, that, why, why are you converting the, I think it's two, looking at the, at places in the north, over on the east, toward the east of the north elevation?
Mm-hmm.
It looks like you're converting a couple of windows into a garage door in a place where you're gonna have a planting in front of it. I'm just curious. That's, that's a design review kind of question that my wife-
More just to be able to open up to the air, it's, because there's design offices, and it's kind of, it's dark on the lower floor, and due to the setbacks, we can't put many window penetrations on the east and the south.
Okay.
And for symmetry, it helps, too.
It does.
Helps for symmetry.
Any more questions while we have this going on here? Thank you. Okay, I'm reclosing the public hearing. What do you think?
Well, I guess, I, I wonder what happens when one of the two businesses burns down, and, and all of a sudden, we have no agreement, and-
You know something we don't know?
Or the Hartings decide to, once again, move to another place for a tenant.
Yeah, it's, makes me a little nervous talking about agreements with-
If the use changes, then you, we definitely would have another bite of the apple for reevaluating parking.
Yes, but what are we gonna, we're going to ask O'Brien's to, you know, give up their remodeled structure and-
Turn your garage spans into, into public parking for, or customer parking?
I don't know. You know, there's another thing that I thought was kind of interesting, there's, there's a garage that evidently is still going to be here, and, you know, that offers, you know, another parking spot, actually, or a couple, maybe.
We actually looked at that. If we, if they did use the garage for parking, it has two effects, ones, it reduces their square footage and less their parking needs, but they would still be here for a variance, because in a commercial setting, you can't staff parking like that without a variance. So, it, it, it does solve a design problem, but it doesn't remove the variance from the equation, or at least on a cursory look, it didn't appear to.
Well, if they have mutual easements to use each other's parking spots, and depending on how it's written, it can be pretty effective.
Well, I think we ought to specify that, if we're going to entertain a motion to accept this deal.
Would we be able to see you?
Mark would. If you want to see the agreement before you make a decision, I think you just give some direction to the applicant and continue this to another meeting.
I think that would be a good idea. Everything needs to be in writing.
If you do, if you do ask the applicant to do that, you ought to give them some dates that give that agreement to us, say, a week ahead of time, so that we can review it and staff it along with counsel, so that they can get an opinion from our attorney, too, on that. So, if you do give them a deadline, a week ahead of the May 24 hearing, is that the date?
Point six.
Point six.
I think you could go with that, but I'm not sure, we don't trust the staff, and who, who would otherwise look this agreement over?
I would ask Bill or Tammy to look it over.
Do we want to see it rather than just trusting them to see it? I, yes, is an okay answer.
I would trust the attorney, too.
And May 24 is the next hearing date, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion? One way or the other?
I move that we continue this hearing for one month to get a written agreement between Harding and the applicant, which will be reviewed by the city attorney or the land use attorney, to see if it satisfies the requirements that we want, which is that there is a mutual easement between the properties, with some kinds, some kind of parameters that they can't just change it at a whim, obviously, and see what they come back with for that main meeting.
So, you want to see it rather than trusting-
Well, no, I, the attorney can review it, but we'll get to see it, too, I would assume.
And the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Any further discussion?
Trying to make sure I understand the motion and ask some-
I can't, I can't repeat it.
I'm not gonna try to either. The hearing date's May 24. I would want that agreement to us 10 days ahead of that, say, the 14th, so we can review it and get it out to you a week ahead of time.
Okay, that sounds even better.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Alicia?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Rourke?
Yes.
This is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding the consideration of V. 1804. Tollavanna Architects request for setback reduction in conjunction with the replacement of existing dwelling at 707 North Laurel.
It doesn't matter, nobody's here to testify.
The applicant, Tollavanna Architects, on behalf of Tom and Brenda Suppley, is requesting a setback reduction to remit a seven-foot side yard setback and a zero-foot setback from a wetland in conjunction with the replacement of the existing dwelling. Mark? You were, you were saying before the meeting that there was a change, does this reflect that change?
I made an error on the notice on this one, and we do need to re-notify it, but because it was advertised, I'd recommend you do take testimony tonight, and then continue it to your next meeting, May 24, to allow us to re-advertise to the, there's three or four properties that we missed in the original application, so our staff there.
Thank you. I didn't remember what the, what the change was.
And is the purpose of taking testimony tonight, instead of waiting till everyone's notified?
Well, if people showed up tonight, because we did notify some of the people.
Oh, oh, so someone-
If somebody did show up, then I would recommend you take your testimony.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And I, the applicant didn't know that I'd made this error until I told him tonight either, so there-
Okay.
The property is located at 707 North Laurel, tax lot seven, excuse me, 6502, map 51019AA, and in a residential lower-density RL zone. The property is owned by Thomas and Brenda Suppley. Municipal Code Section 17.10.040.0B.4 standards requires a minimum 15-foot side yard setback on a corner lot. Municipal Code Chapter 17.43 establishes a wetland buffer area. The request will be reviewed against the Municipal Code Section 17.84.030 Variances Criteria for Granting. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Has any commission member made a site visit? Is there a staff report?
Yes. This is a setback reduction, or excuse me, variance to setbacks requested for several different reasons and that's reflected in kind of the unique story behind this lot. If you look at the picture of the lot, you can see it's kind of in irregular shape, kind of, it's very irregular. That's the result of a partial street vacation that was approved by the city many years ago because the house that sits on this lot was placed on the lot actually over the property and partially in the street right of way. Now, when you look at that street right of way, you don't see much there. There's a pathwalk, you can walk through there, but that still is a partial street right of way even though there's not a street developed in it and this is a corner lot even though that street now is not really undeveloped but partially protected. So they have a corner lot setback situation on the south and west sides of the lot. On the rear side of the lot, there's a wetlands issue that actually extends along the south line too. We have a five-foot buffer area between wetlands and any development like this building. Five-foot buffer is essentially a setback and they're asking, they're requesting a variance to that to allow them to push that building and go right up to the wetland buffer. That makes, normally that would not make much sense, but in this case it does. The current dwelling there, which would be demolished, the foundation and the wetland boundary are in the same place. That, I don't know when that foundation was built, but it was built without the benefit of any wetland regulatory compliance or anything like that. So the foundation essentially is the line between wetlands and non-wetlands on this lot, on that east side of the dwelling. So when you're looking at a replacement dwelling, that actually may make some sense since the buffer on that side has, is the part of the house and has no value in terms of non-mettable vegetation that might buffer a wetland. The other, so those are the issues in play here, the outsides of the lot, corner lot, partial vacation, and the configuration of wetlands on this site. All those things are a little different, a little outside the norm. There is one requested condition here if you do get to approval on this, and that has to do with the floor area ratio. Our floor area ratio in most zones is 0.6, but in this zone, it is not. And there's a more complicated formula for determining floor area ratio here. It's reproduced at the bottom of page three. And the applicant looked at her form and applied the, what is, I guess I would call the usual floor area ratio to this. It puts him a little bit over the top on this. He's proposing, I think it was 3,100 square feet. He actually would have a 3,000 square foot maximum FAR on this lot to comply. It's not requesting variance to that. So there's a slight reduction in the floor area that would be needed to make this compliant with that standard. There's also a potential ADA issue here. The applicant in the application materials mentions accessibility for a wheelchair-bound member of the family. I do not have a lot of time to drill down with the applicant on how exactly that compliant or how exactly that accommodation fits in here. And you may want to do that as part of the hearing process, but if ADA is an issue here and you take this seriously for a lot of reasons, you really do need to look hard at whether there is a reasonable modification or accommodation to provide to the handicapped individual that doesn't jeopardize our overall program here. And if that's the case, you should provide it. It doesn't come up very often. I think the last time you dealt with it was a single-family dwelling, a-
A ramp.
A ramp that was extended into the front yard setback.
Right, which is very clear.
Yeah. So in that case, I think it was pretty clear what the accommodation was, that linkage between the requested accommodation and the need to access to the lawn was pretty clear. I don't have enough details here to tell you what that is here, so you should rely on the applicant to fill in some of those blanks for you if that is a requested accommodation.
Was there something about a deck extending over the wetland?
There's a possibility of that too, but they've not requested this, that at this time. So they, they've talked to me a lot about how that might play out, but it's not part of this package that has some other permitting requirements that they're going to have to address.
State and federal permitting possibly. Yeah, but so that's not going to be addressed at all with this request?
Well, he may bring it up as part of the narrative, but it's not part of this request.
So the, the wetlands to the east, how far does that continue?
To the property line.
To the property line, okay.
Yeah, there's a, this map here on that, it looks like that, there's a little pattern there that shows wetlands, basically the higher east portion of the property past the existing house's foundation is wetlands.
So, so- It's only on into the neighboring, it looked like, on into, at least into the neighboring lot.
Yeah, the same party owns the property to the east.
Oh, that's right.
And it extends on that property too.
So then the, the property to the south, that's just easement for a street that hasn't been developed?
It's a street right of way, a public right of way. It's been partially vacated, roughly north half of it here has been vacated, so it's now part of this lot, but we still hold the rest of that right of way as a public right of way. And we certainly could develop that as a street, although there's not much width left to do that. More likely it's going to be a path in a utility location.
I've looked at this, the diagram that you showed us there, and there are a lot of lines in there, but I can't tell what's the existing house footprint, what's the proposed footprint for the new house, what, what all have we got there?
Well, I was able to sort it out myself, but you're right, it took a while and I urge you to rely on the applicant to walk you through that.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Okay. This is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered or noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue concludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yes. Yes. I'm David Vanneta, Post Office, Box 648, Tollavanna Park, Oregon 97145, and I represent the Suppleys in this application. Bob, I did anticipate your question, as it turns out, on the exactly, exactly what is represented on that drawing. We actually had a survey and the surveyor used different line types to kind of identify existing improvements and so forth. What I did was help it for that interpretation. So what you see here in green is actually the outline of the existing house. And so it actually does extend all the way within seven foot two of the side yard setback. Essentially the same thing we're asking for now with the new house, the new replacement Doesn't quite extend as far to the west and as, and Mark talked about, the existing deck actually extends this, to this dash green line, if you will, right there. The wetlands border is this kind of chevron-shaped line first here. The five-foot setback is this additional chevron-shaped line there. So hopefully that gives you a better idea of what the existing conditions actually are.
So, I, my, I've got too many things going on in my head, I guess. The green, again, the, the green solid line is-
Is the existing house.
Is the existing house and the dark, presumably black is the proposed footprint of the end.
Has proposed.
And this is going to, I'm not sure why I'm asking this, but this is going to be a one-story or two-story house?
It's going to be a two-story.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. And we're trying to bring the house as far to the west as possible. This, this dash line represents the required setbacks of 15 feet on the front, 15 feet on the side. And so again, we're matching the seven-foot setback of the side yard and we're bringing the house forward almost to the 15-foot setback. It's really more determined by the 18-foot parking space you see here as far as the location of the house, so.
But the whole house isn't being brought to the side yard setback?
No, it isn't. It's actually-
That whole area there is empty?
This portion is.
Yeah, what's, what's that?
Yes.
That's nothing?
Well, it's, it's frankly all right.
Okay, but that, it could be, it could be built in there.
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct. Mark mentioned there was a discrepancy in my FAR calculation too, but I think I came up with 3,500 square feet allowable versus 3,000.
Yeah.
We're certainly willing to make that adjustment to meet the FAR. This actually represents both, again, what would be the 3,000 square foot of FAR as well as the allowable lot coverage for this lot. It is a unique piece of property, obviously, in that, you know, almost a third of the lot is in the wetlands. So we obviously can't build over the wetlands without a considerable, you know, complicated permission process through both TSL and Urban Corps of Engineers.
But why aren't you building that way? I mean, why aren't you, yeah?
Actually, that's more deck area. We could, but they chose to architecturally set it back.
Oh, but they could go into that area instead of, to the edge of the wetland, couldn't they?
Yeah, that would be possible.
Yeah. And show me where the deck is now. Is it right over the wetlands?
It's this ash green line.
Right.
Right there.
And where's the wetland line, where's the wetland line?
The wetland line is this-
So right now, that deck is over the wetlands?
Yeah, their existing deck is over the wetlands now.
And you, okay, we're not going to talk about the proposal because it confused things.
Right.
Okay, so.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So this is not the, this configuration is a desire, but it is not necessitated, necessitated by the lot. There are other alternatives that are possible to enlarge the house and not go into the wetland, correct?
Yes, that is correct. In other words, pulling that back and adding square footage.
Okay, okay.
And can you, this was something that came up earlier. Are you in a position to explain what the relevance of the ADA condition is to this?
Yeah, my experience as an architect that ADA has never applied to the residents. Is that clear in the ADA?
Really?
No, this, it's a different question, though. If he's requesting, the accommodation is, if the request for the variance is related to the needs of a handicapped individual, it's not us imposing as a matter of building code something to that residence. It's him asking us to waive or relax a requirement to accommodate a handicapped person. But it's a request for us to be not-
Let me, can I recast my question in light of what he just said? In what way would this design, is it designed in such a way to accommodate the needs of this handicapped person?
It is in the fact that this design is an open plan. It's got three-foot doors, for example, where you normally have two-foot eight, that type of thing. It is a two-story house, however, they have a compactor and elevator. The, the actual person subject to the ADA requirements is actually the sister of the owner. And so they've made accommodations for her on the ground floor, so when she does it, she has accommodations.
Except there's nothing in the variance itself to go to the edge of the wetland that has anything to do with accommodating somebody. In other words, you could go, you could build the other way and the accommodations could still be the same. It's nothing to do with the size of the doorways or anything.
It's more just a function of the size of the house. They wanted to make it large enough to accommodate a person in a wheelchair with an open plan.
Right, but if you didn't, if you didn't go to the edge of the wetland and went the other way, you could still do that.
Yeah. What, if you look at the plan, that area that you're talking about is actually a covered porch area.
Right.
So what you would suggest, I assume, is enclosure of that as living space and reduction of this living space on the back of the building in order to use the five-foot setback.
Exactly, right. And there's, and there's nothing about the person, the visiting sister's disabilities that would make that not work?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the question I have.
And I have to admit, it challenges the architect to figure that out.
Yes.
Okay. The nice thing is, quite frankly, we're going to be back in in a month and, you know, I appreciate your feedback and comments and I'll take it back to the Suppleys.
Okay.
With that.
That'd be great.
And based on David's testimony, I would agree that the ADA is not implicated in here. So I'll revise the staff report and eliminate that part.
Any more questions for Mr. Vanneta at this time? See you next month.
Correct. Or a few minutes.
Or a few minutes? Is there a presentation by proponents? Is there a presentation by opponents? Is there a staff response?
That's all I have.
Does the applicant wish to make additional statements?
No.
Okay. Okay, the hearing is being continued in order for it to be re-noticed and you, the rest of you will be here from now. And what did you say the date is, 22nd?
May 24th.
24th.
And we're going to re-notice this, so there's no need to announce the date and time.
No need to what?
If we were continuing it without notice, I would, I would ask you to announce the date and time.
Oh, okay.
We're going to re-notice everybody, so.
Oh, okay. This is also a quasi judicial public hearing in this case regarding the consideration of VE-18-05, Tollavanna Architects' Request for a Setback Reduction in Conjunction with Remodel of an Existing Dwelling at 132 Tanana Avenue. The applicant, Tollavanna Architects, on behalf of John and Deborah Stoner, is requesting a setback reduction to permit a one-foot-zero-inch rear yard setback and a one-foot-five-inch side yard setback in conjunction with the remodel of an existing dwelling. The existing dwelling exceeds maximum building coverage requirements. The property is located, the existing dwelling already exceeds. The property is located at 132 Tanana Avenue, tax lot 5800, map 51031AA, and in a residential moderate-density R1 zone. The property is owned by Jonathan and Deborah Stoner. Municipal Code Section 17.12.040 standards requires a minimum 15-foot rear yard setback and a minimum five-yard, five, five-foot side yard setback. The request will be reviewed against the Municipal Code Section 17.84.030 Variances Criteria for Granting. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? When I went for my site visit, Mrs. Stoner noticed that I was getting out of my car and offered to show me what was going to be where and walked me around the outside of the buildings, pointed out where the roof was going to be raised, where the side building would be extended forward. I, I told her that I would be mentioning this conversation. I didn't give her any, any assurances and if anybody has any questions about that conversation, they're welcome to weigh them. I don't think that I, I don't think I know which way I'm going to vote on this and I don't think that the conversation biased me one way or another. I don't think that the conversation biased me one way or another. Has any commission member made a site visit? Is there a staff report?
Yes, this is a variance request for relief from the rear and one of the side yard setbacks. If you look at the site plan, part of it looks like this. You can see the relatively small envelope in the middle of this not terribly large lot, and the existing house that's pushed way to the back and way to one side. Reasons for this are the same as you see regularly. There's a desire to add some square footage here, and the way these setbacks work on this lot, the size of this lot, there's very little that you can do without some sort of relief in the form of reducing those setbacks to the variance process in this case. The design is such that they've not implicated the front yard setback or the east side yard setback or the west side yard setback. It's just that rear setback that's a problem here. The new addition on the west side is actually entirely within the setback, so that one's okay. It's the garage, second-floor bedroom, and new bedroom that show up on the east side of that small lot that are encroached both into the, that encroaches into the rear yard setback. This has the same issues that you're familiar with on these types of requests pretty regularly. Is there a necessary hardship or practical difficulty here? Are there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances in play? And was this the result of the acts of previous owners? On the first two, those are subjective criteria you're going to have to evaluate. On the third one, which is zero-three-zero sub E, if what we're relying on here is the small size of the lot, then yes, that was the act of the previous owner who divided it up, because these lots were all originally planted at fifty by a hundred, and this is roughly half that size now. If there are other special circumstances, then you need to drill down on those before you approve this. But those are the key criteria in action here. The other parts of the code that often come up on this, building height, off-street parking, they're compliant on those points. It's actually amazing that David has got all those things to fit on a very undersized lot, so that's an impressive feat all by itself. Anyway, that's all I have. There's no additional correspondence on this. I had a couple of phone calls, but nobody followed through with any testimony, nobody had any information, and they needed to express to me over this at any rate.
So the back lot, if it was in compliance, would be five feet from the property line?
No, the back would be fifteen feet. This is a, setbacks here are fifteen feet front and rear, five on each side. This is an interior lot, different from a corner lot. On the corner lot, like the previous ones, we did fifteen feet on the street sides, five feet on the other sides. So this is fifteen front and rear. And it's the rear that's implicated in this one.
Okay. Majority of square feet of the house at present are in the setback, it looks like?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay.
No, they're not.
May you pardon?
The existing house isn't in the setback.
No, and the existing house is mostly in that rear setback, or close to half at any rate.
There's the setback line. There's the house, and there's the little building over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Tanana is the front?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
The south side.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's a fifteen-foot yard, fifteen-foot front yard setback, and they're not encroaching on, the existing house doesn't encroach in order to the proposal.
Yeah. Okay, ready? Got it? I see now why you were saying, you're going to hear from the weather.
Yes.
Yes.
Two minutes, maybe two. David Vanneta, Post Office Box six-four-eight Tollivana Park, nine-seven-one-four-five.
I didn't, I didn't add my green highlighter this time, so we'll have to just kind of follow along if you would want to. But yeah, this dash line at the rear of the property represents the rear yard setback. So yeah, the existing, the living portion of the existing house is in the rear yard setback, like they over-half. What the owner, Devon John Stoner, gave me originally with this project, really desiring to keep the design to a minimum as far as what they wanted to add to their property. They wanted to keep it single-story, they wanted to keep it cottage-like, they didn't want to tear it down and build a small version of a McMansion, they wanted to keep it very much in Cannon Beach character. Deb Stoner is actually here tonight to testify after me to that same effect. But I wanted to point out a couple of things. There's actually a clouded area on the drawing. We normally use that as an indication of revision. You haven't seen the drawing before, so, but what I wanted to point out was, the Stoners actually talked to the next-door neighbor, and you might notice I've added a couple notes here for view in those. They were very much concerned about the impact that this remodel was going to have on the neighbors. They pretty much talked to everybody in the neighborhood, and as Mark mentioned, there were no letters of opposition or anybody, I don't think, that's going to testify against me. If they do, it's abuse to me. But the Stoners talked to this, we get neighbor, and they actually had me pull the face of the garage back a foot and cut back the roof overhang on the end of the garage in order to accommodate their neighbors' view for these existing windows. So that kind of indicated to me kind of the spirit that they're approaching this with, very sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors and community. The one, the one thing I wanted to point out, and the way I worded the variance is a little deceptive in that I really cited the existing setbacks for the house, one-foot five off the west property line, something like one-foot two on the rear. That is really an existing condition. The actual addition that we're proposing here is going to be within five feet of the rear setback, measured right here. So the existing house is going to remain as, if we're obviously going to move it. But with a new addition, we're hoping to provide a bedroom, a guest bedroom. It's going to bring the house up to only two bedrooms by allowing that five-foot setback. If we had to comply to the full fifteen-foot setback, essentially, we're eliminating that bedroom. It's really a function of the ability and getting some return on the investment of the remodel. They obviously want a garage to be minimized absolutely to the smallest extent, the garage has a single car. But they really desire replacing a little shed building that's here with a bedroom that's attached to the house. So if you look at the survey, it really tells the story of the existing house and the detached shed that's there now. So that detached shed is actually five-point-six feet from the property line. We're simply proposing that the addition remodel extended it five feet slower. We're taking the liberty of adding, subtracting six inches from where the existing shed is now. So I think all in all, it's a reasonable suggestion of what they want to do here. They're not going over the top, they're well within height limitations, they're well within the allowable, both that they are in a lot coverage and leave, Mark.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So really, it represents the minimum they would like to do with the property. And I tried to emphasize that to them through the, through the process, but based on my experience working with you guys, that's, that's really what people be looking for in this kind of condition.
So what, what is the height of the building at the upper point?
It's going to be about eighteen-foot-four from existing grade. Here's a actual front elevation that we're proposing. Here's the garage, it's going to have a covered porch at the, and the site, of course, still looks to the west. And we estimate it's going to be about eighteen-foot-four, maybe eighteen-foot-six at this far corner. So it's well within, you know, we could go up to twenty-eight feet, as you guys know. And they really chose to keep it point, low-scale, cottage-like, and hopefully it'll look like it's always been there.
Any more questions at the moment?
Well, the-
Oh, sorry.
The only other way to get square footage on this property is to go up, right?
Uh, correct. Or infill our, our, our point little covered porch area. But we really see that as significant aesthetic addition. You know, they, they want to go out there and sit on the porch and, you know, have the porch.
Right, well, I know, but I'm just saying, but I'm saying that if they wanted more square footage, they could go up and they could put a deck up there and everything.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, rooftop, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we could have done a lot more and added more square footage, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Are there presentations by proponents?
Thanks, David. I'm Deb Stoner. The mailing address is one-two-three-four-five Southwest One Thirty-first Avenue in Tigard. And my husband, John, and I are both teachers, so he's not here tonight because tomorrow's a school day, but I'm playing hooky, so. I would just like to, I'll be brief, but I really would like to thank you people because I've been here my whole life in Cannon Beach, and I know the work you're doing is to try and preserve the community the way it is. Appreciate that. Just anecdotally, the year that I was born, my grandpa broke ground on a lot on Gugona, two blocks from our house now, and he paid fifteen hundred dollars for that lot, which is just incredible to me. So this is six-year-old me running on the beach right in front of where our house is now. So I love this place and have been here my whole life. He's cute, huh? The way that, so we came here as grandkids. My brother and I used to walk right past the little house we have now to buy bottle rockets at the Tollivana store, and we'd stick them in the sand and shoot them off on the beach the whole way home. So that little house had little Debbie and Danny trace them by it. The way I met David was that I attend the cottage tour every year. Every year we've done it, I go, and I love that aesthetic, and I personally am really pleased with the work he's done for us. We're trying to create sort of a little jewel and a place for our family. We're trying to do the smallest amount possible to achieve that. I think it's Lisa mentioned, we could have indeed gone up two stories and gotten a view. And the first time I talked to him, I said, I can't do that to the neighbors because it really would have obliterated them, and I'm just not that kind of person. So we really ultimately, and I'm just a layperson, he explained it well, but if you visited the site, the variance is for this small three-foot area to enclose that breezeway. If we do not do that, the bedroom back there is like eight feet by eight feet, and maybe you could put a queen bed, you know? So I'm trying to do the smallest thing I can to make one more sleeping space. We're not going two stories, we're not making a McMansion, we'll never rent this. It's just a, it's going to be a family place for us like I had. I have had kitchen table conversations with the neighbors, Dennis on this side, Bernie on this side, and just talked to them really candidly about how it would affect them. And the guy on this side said, my request, he goes, we always knew someone who had a remodel there. My request to you is to stay back from our living room window. So we have pushed that addition back even more. I mean, every six inches counts back there to accommodate his living room. So I'm hoping to do this for our family and also be, you know, a good member of the community, so. Do you have questions for me?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Are there presentations by any other opponents? Presentations by opponents? Staff response? Okay. The applicant wish to make additional statements? Okay. No reason to think that the hearing is being continued? So close public hearing and move to consideration.
Well, it is a really weird-shaped lot. I mean, it's a, it's really, it is, and that the whole, that whole little area has, looks like it's been chopped up, and a bunch of little houses were put in next to it, like it's cozy and comfy, you know, those little cottages, they're tiny little things, and then, then there's this one. And I, I just would hate to see a big two-story house go in there. And it has one bedroom now. I mean, I mean, that's what'll happen. I don't see any way around it. And-
I think they're going out of their way to-
The fact that they pushed back to accommodate their neighbor's view says a lot to me because they didn't have to do that. They could go up two stories there, easy, and actually not have to ask for, well, they would anyway because they're already in the existing setback, but yeah.
Two-story house that was quite narrow to accommodate both of those setbacks.
Yeah, but it could be done.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm just saying, I think this, I think this lot is a weird configuration, and it's really small, and I think they're kind of left with only one other alternative, and that's to go up. So I think we have to think about that.
One thing I'd like to add now, that this is going to affect how I ordered on supporting this proposal, but we have in the past taken a dim look at additions to non-compliance in the sense this is adding to this non-compliance structure.
Yeah, that's true, even, even, I mean, and usually it's a situation like this where it's grandfathered because it was built before the city was-
Before the city paying attention.
That's true, we have taken a dim view, but we've done it in certain circumstances. And I think to, one of the reasons we've done it is because the alternative was so terrible. So, I mean, I think, yeah, I know.
I'm just saying.
And it, and I think, you know, especially when it's oceanfront and going to affect a lot of, a lot of people who live in the area, that makes a difference, you know, because it impacts everybody's, you know, access. So I think that-
Well, it's not a designer bedroom.
Hmm?
It's not a designer bedroom that's being stuck on here.
No, it's not, and I think, you know, I mean, we've seen people wanting, who are non-conforming, wanting additions where, so they can make a four-thousand-square-foot house. That's kind of a different type of need, I would say, than we see here.
No, I agree.
So I think that that's one of the things we do is exercise discretion based on particular circumstances, as long as it's within our parameters to do it.
I agree, I think it's, I think they've taken the effort to keep it modest and listen to their neighbors. I think it, I think it looks pretty good.
Okay. Sounds to me like somebody, we're ready to have a motion.
I move we accept this, accept this.
Okay. Any further discussion? Aleisha?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ridley?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Sherri Lundey?
Yes.
Okay, now what we've all been waiting for. Take a moment for anybody to leave that's, that's done. This is the continuation of a legislative public hearing regarding consideration of ZO-18-01 and CP-18-01, Fording Management Plan Amendments. The City of Cannon Beach is requesting zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan text amendments updating the city's Fording Management Plan. The zoning ordinance text amendment request will be reviewed against the criteria of the Municipal Code, Section seventeen, point eighty-six, point zero-seven-zero-A. Amendments criteria. The comprehensive plan amendment request will be reviewed against the criteria of statewide planning goal eighteen. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to give a fairly abbreviated staff report because we've gone over most of this stuff already, but I do want to touch on some issues that have come up between your last meeting. So you have the four pieces of this proposal, and they're kind of from the bottom up or the foundation to the roof, if you will, the dogami report that John Allen produced, that's amended. You have the revised version that we've been waiting for. On the second page of that in your packet, I've put an email that I have distributed to you earlier that related a conversation that John and I had that points you towards the substantive changes in that document. I know you would ask for a show changes version of this, but John could move so many paragraphs around and change the titles on so many drawings that were important but not substantive to your deliberations that you really would not have been able to tickle out the substantive changes from the nonsubstantive ones. So I asked him to just summarize that. That's what I did in that email. And that's attachment A. Attachment B is a report prepared by Crest that also is amended from your previous version. That would be in the carloms of planning, kind of the plan element itself. And then C is comprehensive plan policy amendments. Those are also amended, and I gave them to you in a show changes format, likewise with the Crest document. And then D, your zoning ordinance amendments, that also is in a show changes format. The pertinent things that you ought to be at some point thinking about here as you drive towards conclusion on this is, you know, the methods for redistributing the sand, timing, the volume and scale, revegetation, monitoring, permitting, and scope of the plan. Those are all things that I've tried to address, and to some extent, there's, some of those are just addressed as a placeholder issue, but I want to go through some of those things now. In the month between our last meeting and now, we had both the revised Allen Report and the opportunity to go back and look at some of the testimony you've had to date. And based on those two things, I directed Crest to make some changes in their report, which are also reflected in the policies and code amendments that are before you. And let me skip right to those. Two things that generated a fair amount of discussion were volume limits and area limits. The key thing to remember here is, in my opinion, those are valuable and useful tools. If you have hard numbers in there, it to some extent can make your decision-making on permits a little less contentious. And it's based on my experience and at least most of your experience on the last, say, three doom grading permits where, I don't have a count of the time, but you spent a lot of time deliberating on the volume of sand to be moved and the area to be impacted. It was a, wasn't the only issue, but it was an issue that took up a significant amount of your attention. There are some flaws with having hard numbers there. It doesn't fit every situation. You want to be able to do things on a case-by-case basis. There are some benefits, too. The main point I want to make here is both with respect to area and volume, there's nothing in Goal eighteen that requires you to have those hard numbers in there. I suggested it as something that might be beneficial in the permit review process, and that's my opinion only. You may see this differently. You might want to handle this on a case-by-case basis, which you are absolutely entitled to do. So here's my recommendation on those. If you decide you want to go with hard numbers on either of those or both of those, think about what those numbers should be. The numbers I put in there should be regarded as placeholders at best, and I think you're going to get some testimony on those, but that's my view, is that you should use that as a starting point to decide what those numbers need to be. Or if you decide you don't want those standards in there, that you would rather deal with those two issues, volume and area, on a case-by-case basis as these permits go forward. It's not like you have your setback reductions for the before you every month. They're something that's going to come up, not even one figure. So handling it on a case-by-case basis also has some benefits, even though it might be more time consuming. There's some testimony, there has been testimony on ADA issues, like disability act issues, and on public access. Both of these are important and should be in your minds. On the ADA issue, this goes back to, it's almost the same as the issue we just talked about. If somebody makes a request for a reasonable accommodation that doesn't do violence to the core elements of our program, they should provide the accommodation. ADA access to the beach is, and public access generally to the beach, can handle, can have a completely different manner than doom grading for view enhancement. Different criteria, a whole different set of considerations coming into play, as you could easily imagine. So I think at times those are going to overlap, that that access point may be in the same place where people want to grade for view, and that's true. But there still are different things that could have a different life going forward into, when you actually implement this in terms of permits. So yes, access to the beach is something we have to consider and fold into our plans. We do not have to fold that into a consideration of grading for views necessarily, at least at the plan level, recognizing that at times those may actually implicate each other and be before you at the same time. There are different processes, different criteria, different objectives. Sand transport by truck. John Allen recommends, and I think it makes a lot of sense, first of all, the whole point of keeping sand in the littoral cell is, is pretty important here. He makes that point vividly. He said that one of the things we haven't done here, but it is done in many communities, is instead of our two practices, pushing it out into the surf zone or packing it on the front of the dune, we put it in a truck and drive it to someplace, in our case, at the south end of the littoral cell where there's erosion. And that makes a lot of sense. Keeps it in the littoral cell, it takes care of a disposal problem in one place, and it benefits another property owner. And I, we really should encourage that and include a provision in the plan and in the ordinance amendments, which we have. There are some outer limits to that, however, in some cases, particularly at Breakers Point, where you would necessarily, if you're moving sand out of Breakers Point by truck to the south end of town, you aren't necessarily going on city streets. And while the city may be able to tolerate fifty-hundred truck trips, they're probably not going to be able to allow thousands of truck trips across city streets with that much material. So there are some infrastructure limits to that that don't negate what the Allen Report says, but those are true things nonetheless. Presidential street is a little better situation. If we grave sand in the presidential streets in Longwood, Tolivana Park, we may be able to just drive it down to the beach without implicating, causing problems in city streets, and depending on the time of year, may not cause too much problem with public access on the beach. So I want to leave that in there, recognizing that it's not going to be a silver bullet solution to large volumes of sand. Likewise with seasonality, there's a place in the Allen Report where the time for grading is suggested might be the May-June-July timeframe, or April-May-June timeframe. By June, we're really into our peak tourist season, and generally, I would strongly urge you not to approve grading permits then. It has too much impact on the beach at a time of the year when we have the maximum number of visitors there. So even though John's recommendation makes good sand management sense, it doesn't make good sand management sense for a month of June or July, for instance, on our public beaches. So that doesn't have to require a change, but it just does require an acknowledgement that there are other factors in play here. European beech grass. The Allen Report and the Crest Report both recommend that we move to a revegetation plan that does not involve European beech grass, that involves native plant species, a couple are identified by name. And I've written this in a way that puts that in our code. This was a problem on Breakers Point's last attempt to get, excuse me, next to the last attempt to get doom grading permit from us, where they proposed a native plant scheme, and it was rejected by the state. One of the reasons it was rejected by a state is that we had no backup in our plan that suggested that that was appropriate. Now we've got it, if you adopt this. However, I also think we need to have a kind of an escape hatch or a plan B there, at least in the interim year, in the immediate years, because, for two reasons. One is, we don't have, I don't mean we, the city personally, but the contractors who we've worked with here in the past don't have any experience with these other plant species. We have good experience with European beech grass. We go with Atlantic, how Atlantic make it, get very high rates of survivability, but we don't have that experience with the native plant species yet. There probably will come a time, in five or so years after you've done a few of these, where you can say, "Yeah, we really have this dialed in. We really don't need to worry about European beech grass as an alternative anymore." Till you get there, I think you need to have that as an alternative, because if we can't make those plants work, the native plant communities work like we need them to, to prevent, to keep those dunes stabilized, then we need a fallback plan, and that could be coco matting or some mechanical solution, or it could be European beech grass, because we already know that works. There's definitely some downsides to that, because it doesn't accomplish what we want to do. It is important, the other thing we want to accomplish is make sure these dunes aren't destabilized, and from my point of view, from the city's point of view, that is, in a push comes to shove situation, we, we have to have the dune stabilized, even if it means, even if we can't make the native plant communities work, because we don't know how yet, or we can't buy enough of them from the nurseries at the times we need them. So until we've got that ironed out, I, I think you should have a, an escape hatch in there, an alternative, if you can't make the native plant communities work. There were questions about the scope of the Fording Management Plan, and it's always been clear in my mind, but perhaps nowhere else, so we added some text. Fording Management Plan covers the entire beach in Cannon Beach, southern city limits and northern city limits. There are, within that management unit, if you will, there are two places where we allow, historically allowed doom grading for view enhancement, Breakers Point and the Presidential Streets. Presidential Streets is further broken up into subunits. So we're not proposing to add any new areas for doom grading for view under this amendment. You have some testimony from some homeowners at Chaplain Point, developed on north of Breakers Point, about their situation, and it's, it's complicated. It involves the restrictions, it involves prior approvals of the subdivision there, but we don't currently allow doom grading at the Chaplain Point subdivision, even though it is within the area covered by the Cannon Beach Fording Management Plan. And the proposed plan wouldn't do this either. And I included some language in there to the effect that anybody who wants to add an area to the Fording Management Plan to allow doom grading for views has to go through a plan in the process. That is a true statement, whether I say it in the plan or not. I think it belongs in the plan. You have a letter from Orca tonight that suggests that that opens up a door in a way that you might not want to. I disagree with that view. I have not had a chance to talk to Cameron, wrote that letter, about why exactly she thinks that. That letter came in late today. But at least on the first blush, in my opinion, two things, that the statement's true whether you put it in the plan or not. You need a plan amendment, a fresh plan amendment, or you could add new areas to this. And I don't think putting that language in the plan changes that situation, or makes it somehow easier or more likely to instantly approve. Permit administration, this is a big deal for us, the staff level, perhaps a lesser issue for you. We've talked in the past about multi-year permits, that is, somebody comes to you with a request for grading X number of yards here this year and a certain amount in adjoining area the following year, and you would hear both proposals together, put together a multi-year package, say, two or maybe even three years out. There are some primitive administration advantages to that, just keeps your agendas open, it's, gives you a kind of a more comprehensive view of what's proposed rather than a piecemeal view. There are also some downsides to that. You give up the ability to review that second phase based on the results of the first phase, for instance. So it's definitely a two-edged sword there. You need to think about whether you want to allow those, disallow those, or again, handle them on a case-by-case basis as they come up. That's all within your prerogative. Nothing in the statewide planning goals that would require one or the other of that. Those are the substantive things I wanted to touch on. I'm going to talk briefly on the schedule also. So we've been at this for a while, but you really are, the Allen Report is only in its final form for you the first time here tonight. Your next meeting is May twenty-fourth, so I don't expect you to do it now, but keep this in your mind, at least for the rest of the evening here, looking ahead, how this plays out in terms of your action on this and making recommendations to City Council. Remember, this is an amendment, part of a recommendation from you, and still requires final action at the City Council. So if you can, if you think you can finish by May twenty-fourth, on, on the twenty-fourth, and wrap up the testimony and make a recommendation, then I would go ahead and advertise this for the June fifth City Council meeting, which is a short time away after your May twenty-fourth meeting, which means I would have to actually advertise it before the May twenty-fourth meeting. So I'm taking kind of a risk in doing that. If you don't think that you're likely to finish up, then I won't take that chance. I'll just put it off. If you finish up on May, great, it'll be on the July agenda for the City Council. There's no burning urge at the City Council to hear this quickly rather than a later month, that we really want you to do a thorough job of it, and I know you do, too. But they also ask me about this regularly. How fast is this going? When are we going to see this? So I'm just, looking ahead down the road, I know you can't tell me tonight how the rest of this evening is going to go, rather than what's going to happen next month. But keep that in mind. We have a schedule that I need to plan pretty far in advance on, in order to keep this moving and keep people's interest without too many months falling between hearings. I do need to keep those, that agenda moving forward, and look to you for that kind of information in the future as we look forward on this. Hannah from Crest is here tonight. If you have any specific questions about her section of this, John Allen's not here, but I've communicated what he told me about the substantive changes. Also with respect to the Crest document, a lot of the changes in there were directed by me, and Crest work is overseen by me, at least in terms of whether we're accepting it or not. And I directed most of the substantive changes between last month and this month. So if you have any kind of, why the heck did you do this thing, go ahead and direct those at me. Hannah was mostly, for the most part, working at my quarters on those changes.
Why did you?
Mostly in response to testimony you've received here on this proceeding and testimony that we had during those previous permit hearings. I assume we're talking also about those hard numbers that I did have and we haven't talked about in the past.
So is this, okay, so this is based on the testimony of people getting up and talking about their views? Is what you've based these directions to Crest to, to change the Crest document?
No, it was based on two things, on the volumetric number. One is there was testimony from Breakers Point and their representatives that the number we had in the previous document was not going to be enough to even break even with the accretion rate. So I boosted that number, although I think I'm almost positive they're going to tell you that that's not enough, in response to that. And I also put in, I wanted those numbers to be in, like I said earlier, the hard limits on area and volume, because most of the testimony, a great deal of your own discussion in those previous permit hearings focused on those two parameters. And my view, this is a generic planning philosophy question more than anything else, but my view is that sometimes those discussions go smoothly and more quickly if you have hard numbers to start with. But that's not, that's absolutely, with my opinion, that's a question, you can either change those numbers or eliminate those numbers and just do this all on a case-by-case basis.
But I'm just, the reason I'm asking is because we've got several letters, we received several letters that, that were from people or organizations that didn't believe that grading for views was even something that we should do. So obviously, you weren't listening to those people. I mean, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to figure out how you made the decision to make these recommendations, because I, when I read them, I was like, what? You know, where did that come from?
So the, the idea of shutting down the program and not grading for view is not any of, none of the direction I've had from the City Council, or frankly, from you, for that matter, has focused on that option. So I've not pursued that option, even though there has been testimony suggesting that we shouldn't do grading period.
Right.
But the very clear testimony I've had from the council and the lack of any contrary direction. direction from you, has led me to believe that we're moving in a way of updating the plan to allow at least some type of grading for view here, not as a way of shutting it down. If we were going to shut it down, we would not have spent the money on the Allen Report. Because you don't need to have that updated report if you wanted to end the program.
Right, but there's so many people who feel like they didn't get a chance to really review the Allen Report. I mean, a lot of interested parties, at least from the communications we've gotten, because the changes weren't delineated at all. So, I mean, they didn't have enough time to sit down with both reports and figure out, I mean, that's quite a daunting task.
Well, it's a frustrating task, too. I tried to do it.
Right, yeah. I did too, and it didn't work for me.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying, I feel like you've gotten a couple letters asking for continuances, you've gotten, you know, I mean, I just, I'm concerned, because it just seems to me that this, I'm worried about the process.
Well, if you need to, if you need, if you believe people need more time to consider this, you definitely should, take testimony tonight, continue it to May. At some point, you need to start giving the staff some firm direction, so that you can get a draft in front of you that's something that you can vote on.
Right, yeah, because I just, you know, I don't know, it just was so shocking, all of a sudden, to see this in writing, without any sort of warning that it was going to happen, these numbers, I mean, that was bizarre, you know, for me, personally. And the other thing I would, I'm trying to square this way, I mean, I've read through the American for Disabilities Act as it applies to beach access in Oregon, and I cannot, for the life of me, see how this is connected, this dune grading is connected to that in any way whatsoever. If you wanted to provide an ADA compliant beach access, sometimes that includes restroom and a parking lot with, you know, designated parking spaces, and it's, and a ramp for people to get down to the beach, it's a whole different ballgame than what we're, and it seems to me, kind of misleading in some way, to all of a sudden just sort of yank in the ADA when it's convenient for what you want. And really, if you want to address that as a whole separate thing, that's a difference, a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you that the ADA access component is separate from the grading for view component, so I think you're right, because I really think they're operating...
I know I'm right. I went through it.
And I wouldn't argue with you on that. There really are separate issues to be dealt with separately. On the other hand, ADA is something we take very seriously here under enforcement, whether the actions didn't do in the 90s on this, so it's not something we take lightly. But, it's been raised, and I don't think anybody, at least to my knowledge, has given us enough specificity to know whether we're implicated, and whether we need to make an accommodation. Nobody's raised it with enough specificity, or suggested an accommodation, to me anyway, that gets us into that sphere. So I agree with you, that so far, we're not there. We need to address ADA access generically, including on our beaches, but the grading for views component of this plan is really separate from that.
Okay.
So I think I agree with you on that.
I don't think it's really fair to say that you made them decisions because we hadn't provided any feedback. I think we're in the same position as some of the citizenry, who wrote letters complaining about not having the information, or enough time to digest it. I mean, we've been given, you know, the commissioners have all been given, you know, various drafts of this stuff, on multiple occasions, and we end up doing a continuance. You know, and so we go back, you know, the next month, and you read the same mind-numbing stuff, and try to figure out what's slipped around, what's changed, and so forth. And, you know, we haven't really had an opportunity until this evening, you know, to register our concerns. And some of, you know, my concerns, you know, are in response to some of the comments that I read from people in that city.
I've got a couple of things that are, in a way, related, as sort of practical substantive issues. One is, having, sometimes, in fact, I think we're in the last few days, walked across Echolah Creek, close to where, no, actually, I didn't end up doing it there, but I could have certainly, close to the Breakers. It seems to me that, at least, a lot, on a lot of days, and a lot of times a day, you could drive a large truck that's presumably going to have good clearance, on the wet sand, across from the Chapman Point area, onto the beach, you know, when you were saying the not being able to take sand down to Tolavata, I was like, oh, okay, well, there are, there are places where there are rocks that come out to, you know, at some point, you get to Hug Point, or something like that. But getting from the Breakers Point and Chapman Point areas, doesn't seem like it's a problem. I mean, some of the time, it would be, but it seems to me, you can, you know when the tides are going to be, and when we have an idea when there's going to be heavy rains, and...
You're talking about driving on the beach on the hard sand.
Yeah, on the wet sand, right. Is there something I'm missing on that?
Well, I think you're right. I think it is doable, because I've seen people do it, and we've had equipment out there. On the other hand, you have, I've never driven anything out there, so I'm not speaking from direct experience. You really have to be careful about both the tides and where you're driving.
Sure.
People who know that do it regularly.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure we want to, as a matter of policy, encourage unknown contractors from doing that as a part of a large-scale sand removal project. It might be the case that we do, but I just, I wouldn't want to wire that in as a policy that we're going to de facto or default allow that.
It seems to me that we shouldn't, on the other hand, wall it out.
Yeah.
I would like to see, as long as we're, you know, we've got a whole Allen Report of substantive matters, to have, of people who have, if you look at, it was coming in over the rock, was talking about towing people out of, there's a history of experience with driving, close to the Breakers in Cannon Beach. The reason that the other one is related is that it also has to do with driving, or going sort of along the edge of the water. I go to Les Shirley Park fairly often, and it looks to me like, probably not always, but almost, you know, most of the time, I can walk from Les Shirley Park out to the ocean, without getting my feet wet, and we've got a couple of wheelchairs parked out in the sort of semi-garage area out there, with fat tires, that I think I could push somebody easily enough from the parking lot at Les Shirley, which has at least one disabled parking space in it, out along the edge, out on the beach. And I have never heard that come up, when people, you know, people are saying, I'm getting old, or my brother-in-law, or my grandmother, or somebody can't get down to the beach. I'm not sure whether that gets, since we're really talking about dune management, rather than about access, but in that context.
Yeah, I think there can be times when they overlap, but generally, and certainly from a policy point of view, I don't see much overlap in here. I make that testimony that you otherwise, but at least from what I know and what I've heard, I don't see it. But I would, I also would definitely not dismiss ADA claims just out of half, although you don't, but you've got to be careful about that.
Finally, I hope, I partly through, for my own, trying to figure out, my own home computer technology, and that taking me longer than it should have, I didn't give myself a long time to review this material. But, I was conscious that the Crest report is a big body of work, so I'm not, I'm not scolding anybody about this, but I, there was a lot of things in there, I think that there are probably some, I think there are some substantive disagreements, either within that report, or between it and Allen's report, about what's being proposed, and what's being preferred, and so forth, and there are a ton of low-level things. I don't know whether this is the kind of thing that could be arranged, but, and I know that I can't do it very soon, but if it could be worked out, that there was a time that I could sit down for a day or two, at a computer with Hannah, and go over the whole thing, word by word, I think, there was, there's a whole lot of it that would benefit from some of that kind of activity.
I agree, there are definitely some inconsistencies that still haven't been run out of the documents yet. You're right.
And, I mean, I'm concerned that the Crest report is actually a Mark Barnes report.
I directed a lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm, and I don't, I don't mean to be offensive at all, but I'm just saying, is that evidently, you were taking your direction, you say, from the testimony you heard, and I, I didn't hear the same testimony you did, I heard both sides. I heard testimony on wanting grading, and lots of it, I heard testimony saying they didn't want grading. So I am very confused about how you directed Crest to write this report, it really concerns me.
I didn't direct Crest, I directed a lot of the changes that you said in the early report.
That's what I'm talking about, the changes, yes. And that, that's what I'm talking about. That's what concerns me, those changes. I, and the fact that, it doesn't seem like they're necessarily based on this report, it seems that they're based on things that you thought you heard people testify to, but I heard other testimony too. So, I mean, there's a discrepancy between what testimony, you know, which testimony did you rely on? You know, evidently not all of it.
Well, at the end of the day, we need to get this into a form that you want to make, take a vote on, so you certainly don't have to take my recommendations on that, or anything, for that matter, but do move forward on this, and see if you can give us some direction, so we can get you something that you're comfortable voting on.
Anybody else have anything to say, before we open this up to public testimony? Okay. We've got additional correspondence. This is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria, or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Municipal Code, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Are their presentations by proponents of the request? That is to say, from people who believe that essentially what is in the revised, well, let me give some advice on what the request is, the request is...
You actually don't have to break it up into pro and con here, because those lines are a lot more vague than they are in permanent...
Fair enough. Who would like to talk first?
That was easy. So nobody...
Who would like to talk second?
Jan Seibert-Wormand, P.O.BAX 778 Cannon Beach. Dear Cannon Beach Planning Commissioners, when I spoke to you about this dune grading issue in January 2018, I asked you to consider our dunes, our beaches, as sacred lands, to be respected, rather than continually, literally degraded. With the addition of the new information from Dr. Jonathan Allen, I ask you again to honor these complex ecosystems, and the creatures who call them home, by allowing the dunes to manage themselves over time, as they have for generations. Also, for the health, enjoyment, and safety of the many people who live here, and for the thousands who visit here each year, please choose the simplest, and overall fairest, dune management plan, which we, as a community, lived with for very well, until 1998, no dune grading. Lastly, due to the possible complexity of your decision-making process, with all of the information and opinions with which you are dealing, if you think it might help you make your recommendation to the City Council, a more complete guide for them, with which to make their decision, I ask that you consider tonight, to consider this hearing, and devote an entire special meeting to it alone. This is such an important matter for our community as a whole, and for the environmental legacy we leave to those who come after us. Thank you.
Jan, are you requesting that we have an additional meeting besides, since, as I understand it, for the regular meetings of the planning commission, if an application has been made for a setback, or something like that, then we have to include that in the meeting on a timely basis? And if we have a work session, then we don't take public testimony, so are you asking that we have an additional formal meeting of the planning commission sometime soon?
If you think that would serve our community best, it's, I'm really asking you to kind of, tonight, really wrestle with that question, because this is one of the biggest things we've ever done, since I've lived here for 30 years, this is huge, and I think it really deserves a lot of time, and I hope that all of you can be here, if there is an extra meeting, or you do it, you continue it to the next meeting. I think it's really essential that each one of you be here. I'm just asking. Thank you.
Any questions, Bergen Seibert-Wormand? Thank you.
I think she's, you know, I mean, my understanding is, is instead of starting at 8 o'clock, we would start at 6 o'clock in discussing this matter, and not have anything else on the agenda.
Well, I don't know whether we can exclude other things from the...
If we had a special meeting, we could, I think, couldn't we?
With that first, and I...
No, but like a special meeting, can we?
Yeah, you could do either of those things.
Yeah.
You could arrange it so that this comes first, the other things come second, or you could have a special meeting, that the other, like the other things on the agenda tonight, those have to be on the agenda, or we'll run out of time otherwise, so it's...
But a special meeting, you can take testimony at a special meeting, can't you?
Yeah, sure. You could schedule a special meeting.
I just wanted to clarify that that was what she was requesting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, if you want to, out-of-sequence meeting, and focus on a topic, absolutely you can. I'll leave it up, notice ahead of the date, to make sure I can hear her partner's behalf.
Okay.
Fran Carey, P.O.BAX 1284 Cannon Beach, 653 Breakers Point Drive. My name is Fran Carey, I've been a resident of this community, and lived at Breakers Point for 24 years. I have been involved in many of the volunteer organizations in this town, I am a member of the American Legion for 23 years. You may have seen me at Oyster Feed, where I am at the desk taking your money. I have volunteered at the library, the school, and the art gallery. My husband was an officer in HRAP, HRAP, a volunteer on the beach, an officer at the Legion, and helped the town when childcare center and the Chamber of Commerce had some problems. There seems to be some confusion that you live at Breakers Point, you are only here on an occasional weekend. This is not true. Many of the owners are here for a good part of the year. We have been active in many of the organizations in this town. We've collected books, sometimes as much as 500, in a year, to donate to the library. We have given donations to the art gallery... library. We have given donations to the art gallery, and some of our members have volunteered there. We have supported the History Center, the Fourth of July Parade, and many other functions in this town. We have given the school trips to Amzie. We are members of this community. Though I am on the beachfront, I do not have access to the beach. I can't go up the hill to the beach nor see it from my condo. I don't have a view, but more importantly, I can't walk up the hill of sand to get to the beach. I can't watch my grandchildren play in the sand or build sand castles with them. I haven't been to a beach fire in many years. I'm not asking for much, to sit on the beach and watch the children play, the dogs running, and occasionally a horse rider riding along the beach. Give me back my access to the beach. I am showing you the original pamphlet with my ConFO on the cover and the original access that I was originally established at Cannon Beach. So, however you want this. I'm in the condo in the middle. Thank you.
I have a question that I don't, before the next gentleman comes, could I, can I ask you something?
Sure.
Apropos of what I was saying about going to the beach via Lusserly Park, you're obviously aware of the park being there, is that you can't get out to the beach by going out along the path from the parking lot there?
If, if I can do it the way you were saying?
One way or another.
It would be very difficult, yeah. I could probably do that, but then I'd have to go down all the hill and everything else to get to it. So, yes, it would be more difficult than if I had access, which, again, ADA would think would afford me access, but I haven't seen any of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's unadmissible, given this evening thing. But these are just a couple photos from the past.
My name's Jeff Lang. My residence is 3226 Northeast 19th, Portland, Oregon, 97212. Bear with me tonight because I'm impressed with what you've all been saying, and especially what Mark's been saying and the due diligence that it seems like goes on in this room. So I'm going to cut short my testimony, also because I think in January you heard me run on about different issues, about citizen participation and what democracy is, so you don't need the lecture tonight. And also, you've got it in a proper form in the public record. I think the only point I'm going to make, then, is that it seems to me this issue has divided many people in the community. I've only been here 15 years. I spend a lot of time here because I love it, and I love the natural world. So, what I'd like to recommend is a public charrette, which I think many of you know what it is. Mark certainly does because he's been to planning school, so have I. And do all of you know what a charrette is?
No.
I do not.
So, what a charrette is, you take the regular public notice, and it gets posted 30 days before you have it. Charettes are basically ways to bring engagement amongst people of different opinions. And the room gets divided. Everyone gets a chance to work in small groups with people that might be in opposition or be proponents. I'm sure there's a lot of people in this room tonight who disagree with me, other than the woman who spoke first tonight. She called it a meeting. I think we need a charrette. And there's also people, my neighbors at Cannon, at Breakers Point, who probably disagree with me, because it's going to prolong the process. What I'm trying to do through having a public charrette is to practice a bit of democratic engagement that I think is necessary to bring the community together, to find some sort of a compromise. So, you asked what goes on in a charrette. We practice empathy, respect for all people involved, constructive engagements of adversaries, compromise that democratizes the debate, learn and share lessons to improve engagement process by evaluation, process by clear and easy-to-understand documents, summarization of documents rather than 300-page documents, make it easier for citizens to engage, pay attention to symbols and minimize jargon, use incentives to encourage mutually productive outcomes. And now you all know that charettes are common in city planning. What else? I'm not a scientist. All 300 dense, detailed, Adelions pages of the CREST report impressed me, but left me hungry for short, understandable summations and recommendations. Does this document make it easy for citizens to engage? American environmental history teaches us where compromise versus monolithic public policy prevails. For example, the compromise by Givert Pinshaw, conservative principle, conservation principle, and John Muir's preservation ethic allowed for an expanded national park system and federal protection for precious wilderness areas. Forest conservation and sound management in our own Pacific Northwest rainforest provided lumber for citizens to build an unparalleled number of homes. Poor policy with little compromise in recent times. Monolithic policy decimated our salmon runs by damming the mighty Columbia River. Treaty laws were broken. Salmon were nearly listed on the endangered species federal list. Cannon Beach Sound Management Plan should be a cooperative process. Without winners and losers, all stakeholders must win a share of their goals and be willing to respect what they have compromised for the public good. This is how a democratic process works, leading to good public policy. We should engage and respect one another's goals, compromise, and not pit citizens against citizens, reflecting the worst character trait of the family of man. Respectfully, and thank you for your time, energy, and honest endeavor to the process, I recommend a charrette under the public meeting rules, and I would recommend it go to the city council. Mark knows how they're done. Legal counsel for the city can figure out the times and how we bring everybody together in a gymnasium or a community center that allows everybody to really dig into it and meet their adversaries. That's the biggest part of a charrette. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any questions before he sits down or after? Okay. Someone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Lydia Lippman, and together with my husband Derek, we have a home in Cannon Beach, 503 Breakers Point.
And what's the mailing address? What's your--
Address is 252 Stamper Road, Lakos Wego, Oregon. Okay. So, this is the first time I've attended these hearings and have had the opportunity to speak, for which I thank you. And it's really been a fascinating process. I've listened carefully to all your considerations, and I thank you for the time and effort that you put into resolving so many issues. I've been feeling a little whiplashed. I listened to Mr. Mark Burns, and I thought some of the things I wanted to say were no longer really necessary, and I could skip all these pages that I've taken time to put together, and that was quite a relief. And then I heard some of the comments from Mrs. Kerr, and I thought, maybe I do need to talk about some of the things that I had intended to talk about, so if you will indulge me, I'll just get straight into that. So, I was going to talk a little about some of the comments that have been put together by some of the people who seem to be most concerned about the dunes and have really come up against anything to do with them. But before I do that, I just want to hang this here, because this is yet another indication from my family of how the whole ADA access issue is such a serious one and needs to be addressed. This hangs on the front of my car, and is relevant to two members of my family who have really been suffering during their visits here. I'll come back to this at a later stage. So, I'm going to base my comments on a letter that was drafted by ORCA, I know you're familiar with that, Oregon Coastal Alliance, on October the 5th, 2017, in which they made some comments that I want to address and some certain misinformation, or perhaps it's my lack of understanding of some of the issues. The first is that they talk about that prior to mid-1990, Cannon Beach, they would love the discussion and the realities of how to deal with the dunes to go back to that time. Personally, I'd love that, because we bought our home in 1992, 27 years ago. They also talk about that Cannon Beach's economy is its scenic beauty, and I'm quoting, it's primarily a visitor-based economy, and its scenic beach vista is being made famous by many photographs, the unique attraction to visitors. And I agree completely. That's exactly what we had. I would look out of my window. I had a beautiful lawn. I saw in the distance a little bit of beach. I could see the waves crashing onto the beach, hence the name Breakers Point. I could see a horizon. I saw these magnificent rocks. I saw the beautiful stunning sunsets. I was able to walk onto the beach by simply going along a broad walk, taking down three steps. There was a platform, two benches, a few more little steps, and a gentle walk down some beautifully graded gentle dunes down to the beach. It didn't seem to worry anybody. It didn't seem to affect anything. I'm talking 1992. And so, life continued, seemingly easily, no divisiveness, no concerns, no problems. Somehow, though, the idea of the stunning views for which Cannon Beach are so famous has morphed into a different definition. Somewhere along the line, the views have become a view of a wall of sand. Quite frankly, people, in the 40 years that I have been visiting Cannon Beach, I've yet to come across anyone who will stand at the bottom of Second Avenue at the seawall, or along President Street, or Hallmark, or Mose, for example, and turn around and say, "I want what I'm looking at to be a wall of sand." That is the quintessential view that I believe Cannon Beach is famous for, and that should be retained. I know this sounds ridiculous, and it is ridiculous. However, this is what is expected of your residents who live north of Nicola Creek. I do not understand this. You don't expect this of anybody else. I can go on and on about this issue. They talk about the desire of a few homeowners for a more ocean-oriented view. Who are these few homeowners? You know, we 70 homes. If we took these 70 homes and we laid them out from Second Beach downtown Cannon Beach and spread them out along President Street, we'd probably cover the entire length of Cannon Beach. And yet, we have been diminished. We have made, been made unimportant. Our desires and our needs have been cast away. I don't understand it. I can't understand this. I'm not going to go into the economic realities that we have suffered. I think you're well aware of that. But more important, I'm not sure whether you know about the economic realities that you have suffered. In the interest of time, I will not go into the great breakouts that I have. I'd be happy to share this if we do go into other seminars and discussions, but I--
I think we would, if you would like to put that in an email, you know, the detailed things, and then you would be not at all alone.
I could, I could certainly do that. So, this is what I want to get down to. Where are we now? My husband and I look out of our window onto a wall of sand. It is discouraging. It's claustrophobic. We see a strip of, a strip of sky, if we're lucky. I've been so interested to hear in the discussions today how often the word "view" has come up. Our esteemed leader here, Mr. Lundey, spoke about a new construction that did not impact his view. We heard a gentle, lovely lady here earlier on who spoke about a house, and she didn't want to do a double story because she didn't want to impact somebody's view. So I fail to understand why we are so discriminated against. We're the word "view" for the people who live north of the creek. But that is a dirty word. I don't understand it. I obviously have not attended enough of these hearings to find out why. But I have to tell you that we feel, my husband and I, we feel victimized, we feel discriminated against, we feel that our home has been in some way vandalized, and we certainly know that our economic well-being has been penalized. My husband will no longer come to his home at the beach because he does not feel this is any longer the place where he was looking forward to spending more and more time in his retirement. So, where do we go from here? We have 70 homes that are so threatened. If they were disappearing into a sinkhole, you would be worried. If they were going to be sinking or close to a landfall, you would be terribly concerned. But right now, we have a disaster in the making. We have 70 homes of well-meaning, committed citizens of this community, which is what we are, who are going to be inundated, inundated and buried under sand. It is really, really serious. And I'm hoping that we can put this divisiveness behind us, that we can give as much credence and respect and responsibility to the people who live there. In just the same way we want to give so much respect to the dunes, why should they get more respect than we? I ask that of you. So I'm asking you to really, really give this some thought. Do the right thing by your community morally, ethically, economically, and legally for us, the people who live in your community. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that one. That is a big issue. We have two members of our family who cannot go down to the beach. It's a 47-foot drop from the top to the bottom. I'm a hiker. I can almost not get down to the beach and up, so I don't know how they do it. We need help. Thank you.
Ask a question?
Yeah, hello.
You're aware that there are beach accesses available for wheelchairs. In fact, you can even get a permit from the police department here to drive onto the beach if you have a wheelchair. And H.R.A.P. runs a program-- And ATRAP runs a program where they have wheelchair with big wheels that they will take down to the rock for people and so there, I mean, I thought maybe you didn't know that that was true.
You know, it's really strange, but sort of one of the joys of having a place right on the beach and beachfront and where we see other people who have that. They don't have to quite go to that length to get to the beach. We are literally supposedly 10 steps away from our door to the beach and to have to go into a car to go to Lee Shirley Park or whatever in order to have the access, I think is really, really unfortunate.
You know that most people in Cannon Beach don't live on the beachfront and do have to go a little distance to get to the beach and that's part of living in a beach community. Very few people actually live on the beach.
But you know, we're so lucky we do and we bought properties with that expectation. So, you know, it's an unfortunate development that expectations have really just not been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
I'm up.
Bruce, welcome.
I just had to let somebody in, I guess. Bruce Francis, P.O. Box 246, Cannon Beach. I feel that we've let the dunes manage themselves long enough. I think that's why we're here. I think that's why we went out and spent $30,000 to get the latest information, get the reports, get all the ordinances and see if we can make some decent decisions. I think this is the first time that I've had the same reaction that Commissioner Kerr had when she read the placement numbers. She said it very eloquently. I was more crass in my description of looking at this, but thanks to Mark, he has modified the thinking a little. I can see his point of view, I can see why he has done it because it does provide an alternative. I don't agree with it, but however, it is an alternative for you to consider. So, I guess then we've got to bring up the old question is, how do we decide on what numbers we're going to use? That's going to be the big contention. But anyway, this evening, I don't want to submit this to the commission, the rambling redundancy that, so I'll just concentrate on a couple of issues. I think if you go to the Allen Report and you look in page 65, 65 has a very, very interesting chart. It's Chart 33, it shows the amount of accretion that's going on from Chapman Point all the way to Silver Point. If you look in there, the top one is the total accretion, the bottom one is the Chapman Point Litoral Cell. What does that chart show you? Shows that a problem really exists in the Chapman Litoral Cell. That's where all the problems are. In fact, when I calculated it out, looking back at figures presented in Figure 33, which shows green and red, green being accretion and red being erosion, when you figure that out, it shows that 98.9% of the problem exists with the Chapman Point. 98.9% of accretion exists in the Chapman Point area. There's only 1.1% of accretion in front of the presidential streets. Everywhere else is erosion. So, why do you see Breakers Point down here all the time? Because we've got the problem. So, we really need to try and find a way to alleviate that mess. So, my request is that applications personally have no volume or area restrictions. It's not a requirement in Goal 18, it's not been there in the past and each application, in my opinion, should be judged on its own merits. But if restrictions are in place, obviously, the current placement numbers are not going to work. Our accretion rates, and we've been stating on the record for many, many years, we're accreting at the rate of 6,000 to 8,000 cubic yards per year. Take the latest report from Dr. Allen, we find out we're totally wrong. We're accreting at a rate of 16,000 cubic yards on an average from '97 through until 2016 where they did that 19-year report. 16,000 cubic yards of accretion every year. So, that's a statistic that you really need to put into your calculations on how much you're going to let Breakers Point take out of there because obviously, it's accreting at a far, far, far greater rate than anybody knows. It's also revealed that from '97 through until 2016, we advanced 125 feet and I say "we," the Chapman Point Litoral Cell, not just Breakers Point, but it accreted 125 feet to the west. So, we lost 125 feet of beach. That's pretty substantial. We grew up with a pristine and iconic beach and now we have a pristine iconic dune. So, I mean, you know, we're getting back to the views, we're getting back to the perception of what someone's view should be, but where do we want to go with this? Do we want to honor our beaches or do we want to honor our dunes? Now, the dunes are a result of putting in the beach grass, which is mandatory in the existing plan and has to be done in the revegetative state after every push. We understand that, we applaud that there are alternatives. We like that, we need alternatives. Please keep the alternatives in there. Remedial grading is currently allowed in the code 35 feet from the footing. Your proposed language is to go to 20 feet. I ask, how do you legally remove sand from your front yard when the front yards are longer than 20 feet from the footing? There are a lot of front yards out there, including ours, where it's greater than 20 feet. How in the world do I legally remove that? It was tough enough when it was 35. Now, you're going to reduce it to 20? I don't see the reasoning. Why do we go there? I think that's something that needs to be considered. I have both the city planner and the current manager of the city out to view the problems that we've got with sand on our landscaping, on our property, on our property line east of the vegetative line. In other words, nothing to do with parks and rec, nothing to do with conditional use permits. It really should be, anybody that has sand blow onto their property, they should have the courtesy to be able to take that sand and take it off their property. Maintaining your own property, your own landscaping, it should be just a given. I don't see why we should have to come down here and fight the city to take a bit of sand off the property. It's a very small thing. The other one I think I wanted to bring up was, in your packets, there's a request from DLCD that changed the time to move the sand from spring and fall to November and I think this is particularly important to the success of revegetation. Mark Barnes, I think, brought that point up with you. I can say from my experience, which now is getting to be fairly extensive, the revegetation I've done on the last seven projects, we've done them all in that November through April timeframe. The reason being, you get the moisture content because of the rainy season and the propagation of the plantings which are required to consolidate the sand, we're asking for 98%. We've always had 95%, 96%, 97%, 98% propagation rates at that time of the year. So, that's a major consideration. And also, I think what I'd like to bring to your attention is, it is a recommendation of DLCD. In fact, if you, this is in the record, if you look at DLCD's recommendations, you'll see that under specific comments, number four, they say that most four dune management plans recommend that the planting of dune grasses should take place November through April in order to ensure survival during the rainy season. Sand stabilization permit of temperature should also take place immediately following dune grading, that you have in your codes. However, the Cannon Beach Strategy calls for dune grading into place late April through early May or early April through August, depending on sand removal methods. This does not coincide well for dune grass plantings. It is recommended that the city consult with Oregon State Parks and Jonathan Allan Dagami to reconcile the ideal timing for dune grading and post-grading stabilization activities. That's straight from DLCD. It's a recommendation that I really ask you to take note of because it concurs with my experience. I think it's something that needs to be changed. I think just one other small comment I had was, driving on the beach, it can be done. We've already been doing that for, gosh, 25 or 30 years, up on the coast, on the beach at Camp Rylea. The county has got permits to do this shifting stand on their beach axes into the intertidal zone and they drive their trucks right out into the surf zone and it can be done. The thing is, as I brought up in previous testimony, the Allen Report has absolutely nothing on studies within the intertidal zone. And I can remember when we were doing this before, we were all arguing over fish, clams, damage to clamming, you know, this all went hand in hand. We don't have a study on that. I asked Dr. Allen, "Why not?" He said, "Well, it was not in my purview." So, obviously, you don't have that information. How in the world are we going to run trucks down there without a study as, you know, whether we're ruining clamming? Personally, I'm going to say probably doesn't ruin it because we've already been doing it. And if anybody's ever been up to Camp Rylea and seen how many trucks are running up and down the beach during clamming season and people are still digging clams, maybe it's going to work. But I personally wouldn't take the chance on it because I don't have it in the study and that's where I am on that. Anyway, thank you.
I've got a question that I haven't found a good time to raise and I think this is it. It has seemed to me that if we do some dune grading, get things down a bit, the way we've done things in the past, plant European beach grass, grows back up again. If we revegetate with the recommended American grasses of one sort or another, there's still going to be grass blowing off of the beach onto there and it seems to me, it's probably going to blow over those dunes and up onto people's yards and houses and roofs and so forth, at which point, it seems to me, we could build into the plan that, okay, when that happens, the people who have received that sand can then have it removed, whether trucked or bulldozed down to the waterline or something like that. Is it your impression that the people at Breakers Point would view that with alarm or would welcome it or what do you think?
I'd like to qualify your statement that you said grass would blow off the beach.
No, not the grass would, the sand would.
Okay.
I may have misspoken.
Yeah, well, I heard you say grass off the beach, sand off the beach. Okay, we're back to this argument of, does doing grading destabilize enough sand to impact the neighbors? We've done researches on all seven. The biggest blowout that we ever had was 55 feet and it landed on Breakers Point property. Now, looking at the accretion, it's not just coming from the dunes. What you've got to remember is if you go from Chapman Point to Silver Point, you have a broad expanse of beach, especially at low tide, especially when you've got sun, especially when there's no rain and you've got a strong southwest wind. It's not the chicken scratch we're doing at Breakers Point on a dune that's causing the northward movement of the sand, it's not us that's causing the impact to other properties. You've got 16 kilometers of open beach-
Yep.
-that is not stabilized. It is not stabilized.
I may have not spoken clearly about what I was asking.
Okay.
That my, in effect, what I was saying is that it seems to me, if we don't have European beach grass on those dunes, then the sand that's blowing up from the south into your neighborhood is going to blow over the dunes and into your yards and your roofs and against your walls and so forth and, and to the folks up the beach from you in Chapman Point. And do you see that as something that would be alarming or that would be welcomed or what do you think?
It's not going to be welcomed, but the term for that is pass-through. Pass-through figures are not put into this report. We know that the difference between having beach grass of European beach grass versus the American is that you're going to get a high, short, narrow dune with the European and you're going to get a lower, broader dune with the local varieties of beach grass. But the percentage that's passing through is so minimal when compared to what's going on. Think of how much sand is moving north and think of what such a small area, then think of the percentage that we're not capturing. We are covering an area that where the plantings are on 12 to 18-inch centers. So, the percentage of open space is so minimal, but the pass-through also is minimal. So, I do not feel personally-
You don't think that would happen?
... that the impact is going to be any great big crime. The thing that we always do in these reports, in the monitoring reports, is to look at sand migration and to look at whether we are impacting. That's one of the things that our geologist, Tom Horton, has always reported on. And like I say, up till now, because we've been using European, it's only gone 55 feet. That's the maximum blowout we've had.
So, you're reading of what we've got here and I hadn't thought of it quite that way and it does say in effect that here-
Right.
-is that rather than having substantially increased pass-through-
Mm-hmm.
-what's being recommended here or asked for would have the same comparable amount of sand impounded, but in-
A broader spectrum, a narrow, it's a lower, wider dune. But there is a percentage of pass-through, I'll grant you that. We're not going to capture all the sand. We don't capture all the sand with European beach grass, you know? Now, I haven't seen a study that tells me the percentage that European beach grass collects versus what American beach grass collects.
Probably in some of the references I've-
I looked at it, I haven't seen it. I don't see those differentials, you know? But I don't think there's a big, big difference in my opinion. You're still trapping sand.
I appreciate your answering my question.
Thank you.
So, have you looked into the availability of native grasses?
Yes, we have. In fact, our very first project in 1999 and 2000 was an area the size of a soccer field and we did it very close to our existing structures and landscape and we took it out and we planted it entirely with American beach grass. And that survived, that American beach grass survived fairly vigorously for about five years and then we saw that the European beach grass slowly overtook it because American dies back in the winter and unfortunately, the American is vigorous all year round. Once it gets in, European is just so aggressive, it does take over. So that 99 and 2000 project, you can go out and find some American, but very little. European beach grass does take it over. That's been our experience. So I think that, you know, you've got to have a mix. You've got to have controls on it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Patrick. My home address is 255 Northwest Torrevue, Portland, Oregon 97229. In answer to your question, Mr. Lundey, and I'm not sure that Mr. Francis understood exactly what you were asking. I think you were asking if the sand were moved down, would the homeowners at Breakers Point be happy with the fact that there's more sand blowing in? I think that's what you said.
That's pretty close, yeah.
And I'm going to answer you really clearly. Absolutely, we'll be happy with the sand blowing in.
That's what I would have guessed.
Okay. And the reason why is because of what's happening. And so I'm going to address your question, then I'll turn to what I want to focus on. It happens to have an issue that's very important. What's happened is because of the European beach grass, and I'm assuming that the Sinewald Report, the Allan Report, and all of the issues that we understand about European beach grass right now are at least understood by everybody here. There is actually a study, I didn't even think to bring it because I thought everybody understood it. American beach grass is not nearly as effective at trapping stand as the European beach grass. And that's one of the reasons, or I should say, that is the principal reason why you have dunes out there. I think we're up to 57 feet in one spot. It's absolutely incredible. It's because it's so effective, it's so efficient at capturing sand. But what happened was, why did we come to the point where we were saying we had to stabilize the dunes? One year, many years ago, a bunch of sand came in, and somebody said, "We've got to stop this." What they were concerned about wasn't creating dunes. It was creating, is stopping inundation of homes. And it wasn't just Breaker Point homes, it was the homes behind Breakers Point. Now, what's happened, if you want to come down and watch it, okay, you can. Come down on a windy day, and you'll see the sand. It hits that front dune, it goes up in the air, and now it goes over the front dune, and it's creating a secondary dune. In fact, there's a whole science behind the creation of dunes. You can only have a geological dune when it's so many degrees. And the European beach grass allows it to go 40% to 60% higher than the American beach grass. Or in fact, if you don't have any beach grass at all, you know what happens? Your dune stays flat. The sand just keeps on going through. Unfortunately, somebody decided they needed to stabilize the dunes because they thought that was the problem that brought it in. What brought it in was a tremendous storm. It was about a three or four-day storm, and everybody said, "My gosh, we've got to stop this sand inundation." But that's where we're not at now. And I think what Ms. Lippman said is, "I was here 27 years ago when it was just flat." It hasn't been even that long back, folks. You can look back at some of the pictures that we've added in some of these hearings, and you'll see there wasn't a huge dune in front of Breakers Point in that one edge. But it's not just the dune. Since we've been coming down, since I've been coming down here, which is relatively recently, it's gone from 160,000 cubic feet, cubic yards, to I understand it's now up to 350 cubic yards of sand that have accumulated in this huge fan that goes out to the front and to the south, and now to the west. Here's the issue. It's timing. It's timing. If we hadn't disrupted nature, we wouldn't have this problem tonight. But we disrupted nature. I wasn't here, you weren't here. Most of the people, in fact, that were here have all left Breakers Point. Several have died. One told me, he says, "I had my brother out here with two cats, and the city wouldn't let us move the problem, this sand." It had just completely blown all over the lawns and everything else. And so what's happened is, we've changed nature. And I appreciate Jan Seaborg. The sacred dunes, the dunes weren't sacred. They weren't there. They weren't here when the Indians were here and all these other things were there. This just is a myth that we've created. And the reason why we've created it is because, hey, look, some people like the views of the dunes. Now you've got a problem. Some people would like to see the views of the Breakers. So whose opinion gets to win? Whose opinion? If you're sitting in a home back from the beach, it doesn't matter to you. But if you're like Ms. Lippman, or my wife, or a couple of other people down there, 70 units, and you bought property so that you could watch the Breakers or your grandkids down on the sand, and I can remember several of the people who've testified in the past, they say, "I can't watch my kids anymore." You talk about a security problem? Nobody's wanting to let their kids go out and play on the sand 50 feet from their own units. Twice now, I've been sitting on the deck and had mothers come up and say, "Can you see my kids?" There's so much dune grass, literally, Ms. Kerr, you can't see the kids. You can't see the dogs. I've had people ask us to help them find dogs. So you've got whole issues with respect to views. Let's don't just say views, let's just say, "Can you see?" What are the visual effects that the dunes have created? Now, some people live off in the backside. I think, Ms. Rizley, you have a home that's back porch. How much sand do you get off the dunes?
We get some on our roofs.
You get some on your roof?
We have mailers do too.
Yes, our gutters are full all the time. We clean them two or three times a year, and they're full all the time because the sand gets born airborne way too early. So my point to you is, if you had a nice, flat sand dune, which I should say beach, okay, which is the way it was for, I don't know, a couple thousand years probably, you wouldn't be here with this whole problem now. So now I'm going to come back to what I really wanted to talk about, and I apologize. But the real problem is the standards. And as I look, Mr. Barnes, at what we've done here is we've kind of deviated from a standard approach. Everything in all of the sand dune management has always been based upon elevation above the FEMA standards, four feet above the minimum flood plain. Now FEMA standards are very important, okay? They're very important because they have impacted insurance. They are constantly monitored by the federal government. You can't cheat the FEMA standards. They have LiDAR now that's checking them. In fact, the city just here the last 30 days approved the most recent maps that have all of those elevations. I think that's a correct statement, isn't it, Mr. Barnes?
So they're not due to be approved until next month.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought they had been approved. And so I guess it was the Planning Commission that voted to approve. And what happens is, is the standards that we've been using since 1997, I think they're the, I want to say the Rosenbloom Standards, allows you to actually shoot the elevations. You can calculate the slopes, and all of those items can be done. When you move that to saying, "We're going to use cubic yards of sand as the permit requirement," now all of a sudden it becomes amorphous and ambiguous. And I highly recommend that the council, at some point's going to have to address it, but I highly recommend that we don't change the basic standards that have been used here for many, many years, which has to do with the elevations, not how many cubic yards you want to remove. It may translate into that at some point, but the long and the short of it is, that makes it very difficult. I think that the previous permit process, which we've had here for, I guess it's since 1997, and then it came up later, all is consistent with the Goal 18s and the statewide planning goals. The plan that's here, the code plan that we have for sand management, is here. It needs tweaking, but it needs tweaking based upon the science that we've spent a lot of money to get. And I think the science supports what we've been saying is, you need to have a plan that allows you to calculate and identify, measure what it is you want to move. And that's what we're saying. From my perspective, whether I'm a Breakers Point owner or not, how do you do it? You have to have objective standards, just like when you're driving down the road, miles per hour. And when it comes to the beaches, it's elevations above what? Sea level, because that's where we're at. We're sitting at sea level first. So from my perspective, I think the biggest issues that I have as I look at the Four Dune Management Plan and the Dagami Report, they should be harmonized. And right now, they're not. And I'll just point out a few of them. Goal four, this is to maintain dunes at a particular height via dune scraping in order to retain views of the ocean. The issue becomes, how many cubic yards is irrelevant? It's how high above elevation, or how much you're impacting the FEMA flood plain. And the standards that have been set in place since 1997 by the Rosenfeld Standards that were established. The management plan is to reduce and conceal places where illegal activities may occur. And that's on page two of the management plan. And I know that that doesn't seem like match, but I'm going to tell you right now, you have no idea what's happening in those dunes. Okay, I sit on my deck, and I watch it. And I say, "I can't believe this." You know, I was a kid once, but I never did some of the stuff that people everywhere here do, okay? And it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse, just so you understand. I think, did somebody say that we have marijuana allowed in this state now? Okay, well, trust me, those dunes are going to get lit on fire before it's over with. People are out there.
On.
Least current. Don't say that, that's true.
I can't even stand it.
Do you realize? Do you realize that?
That is ridiculous.
Does you realize that's one of the concerns? If the dunes actually do burn? I tried it. I was amazed. So my point to you though is you've got safety issues about what's going on, illegal activity out in the dunes. That's an important issue. Okay, the last thing is important, that European beach grass somehow or another be handled in a way that makes sense. I don't know why you're shaking your head. If you think it's not happening, come on down, and we'll show you what's going on out there in these dunes because you're going to be amazed.
No, I'm not.
Oh, you're not?
You're supposed to cut down all the force because there's illegal activity happening in force?
No, 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 no.
What are you talking about?
Ms. Kerr, that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is in an area where you don't know what's going on, and we have virtually no police protection there because they can't get across the Golden Creek and stuff. Okay, but the long and the short of it is, there are things going on down there, and there are kids getting lost down there. And trust me, I helped finding the kids. Okay, it happened. And in fact, we have one cave in, not here in Cannon Beach, fortunately, but down further south where a young boy was digging in the sand in the dunes down below. And it collapsed on him and killed the kid. And it gets done about three years ago. So I'm saying to you is this. If we're going to change the code, and I think we are, I say tie it to the standards that you can measure that have been historically in place. And you're shaking your head, but I don't understand why. That's what the whole elevations in FEMA and all those things are doing.
I'm shaking my head about the past things you said, not that.
About the what?
I'm still shaking my head. About the illegal activity in the dunes.
Oh, that is one of the, that's one of the concerns that are in the plan. I'm not making that up. It's already in the...
I saw it.
Me too.
Any questions?
Laughed then too.
Thank you, and we're now past nine o'clock. I'd like to sort of just have a show of hands of how many people would still also like to be heard if it's going to be a good while yet. I'm going to declare a break. How many people are still planning to ask to speak?
I just want to know when you guys are going to vote on this. I mean, this has been going on.
Yep.
I mean, I feel like you can't turn a real lot. I mean, going to a lot of these things, and I'm a homeowner.
I don't think anybody can give you an answer.
Well, we just got, we just got the, all the studies just recently. So that, and they're very, they're very dense.
Right.
So that's one of the reasons for the big holdup.
Not tonight.
Oh, obviously.
Anybody else who is, you will watch it. Okay, and I know we've got one person that I think came to have something to say, good to be ordered. Okay, let's go ahead. Just got a little bit to go, there's no point in taking a break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very record, Tim Ramis. I'm legal counsel for the Breakers Point Homeowners Association. And I, my address is at 2 Center Point Drive, Lake Oswego. I appreciate very much the time you spent on this. I know it's been time-consuming. I appreciate very much the solid professionalism of your planning director, who has always been very accessible and helped to educate me on the issues that you're facing. The last time I was here, you were hearing testimony that was aimed at persuading you that you should be as restrictive as possible with respect to sand management. And those arguments were based on two principal assertions. You now have in the record evidence about those assertions and how true they were. The first was the claim that the management of sand was an interference with the natural ecological balance. The word sacred was used at times. The truth, as you now know, is that the condition that's out there on the beach is not a natural condition. It's the product of the work of an invasive species. And it has changed the ecological balance, and it has changed the habitat for the worse. So that proposition is clearly untrue as a rationale for limiting management of sand in the area. The second proposition you were told is that you needed to protect the city from flooding by allowing a wall of sand at the edge of the city. That, of course, plainly doesn't work given a topo map that shows that there's a creek that cuts a hole in that wall. But more importantly, piling up sand there doesn't protect the city. What protects the city is meeting the FEMA and DSL standards of four feet above the base flood level. By placing sand in the cell that's further towards the seaward side, you actually place it in a point where it can do some good in terms of protection because it absorbs the action of the wave and its energy further out from the edge of the city. Allowing sand to pile up at the edge of the city clearly doesn't really protect you from anything. The reason I mention these things is that it seems to me that the chief deficiency at the moment in the current draft that's before you is that it's still rooted in these false beliefs to some extent. And that needs to be cured in order to put together a draft that really makes sense in terms of the policy work that was done and the scientific work done by Dagami. The example that I would point to is the one that Bruce pointed out, and that is that while there are 16,000 cubic yards of sand coming in, under this regulation, you could only deal with 8,000 of them per year. So the policy result would be the continuing buildup of sand in the area. It wouldn't really address the problem. That's clearly a defect in the code as it's written. The result of allowing that sort of policy would be, first, the invasive species will continue to thrive and affect the environment. Second, sand will not be placed in a position where it could actually be protective of the interests of the city. Third, because it's so limited, the parties are going to have to continuously be filing permit applications. So those who oppose those will have to continuously appeal them, and it will become a cottage industry even greater than it is now. You'll be facing more and more of these applications, and of course, the litigation that goes with it. From a public fiscal management point of view, probably not a wise policy. Finally, the ADA question. The question raised about, is it connected somehow to this? This is what I would suggest, and I've had to look at this because the complaints we've begun to receive. The city has been subject to a federal consent decree. And as I read it, one of the fundamental problems the city faced was that it had public accesses, but failed to adequately maintain them. And so one of the requirements is that you do that. The thing that's sort of different about Breakers Point compared to other projects in this area is that you actually mandated public access at this point. Your code required it. You conditioned the project to provide it. The project built the public accesses, and you approved them. What you're considering is an ordinance that prevents the maintenance of those accesses. And that, I think, is something that I'm concerned about from the point of view of my client. And I won't, I won't deign to advise you on it. It's not my role. But I would urge you to consult with your very able legal counsel on that question. The specific requests that we have are detailed in the letter that I provided. The specific requests that we have are detailed in the letter that I provided. It outlines four or five adjustments to the code, which I think would be very useful in lining the code up with what's actually in the science of the report that was provided. And so that's our request. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, the hearing is going, is being continued. And, oh, I have this open for the agenda. Is there consent for the chair to sign the appropriate orders? Any objection to that? Okay. Is there a tree report?
Back.
Placed back here. I didn't even, I don't think I went back that far.
Can I turn the clock back just a second?
Yes, yes.
So if you're continuing this to May 24,
Yes.
your next regular hearing, then just say so.
Yes.
If you want to schedule a separate special meeting for this outside of the normal rotation, then we need to pull our calendars out and figure out what that date is. Because I would rather announce it tonight than have to re-advertise.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of a separate meeting. Any other opinions on the subject? If we were to have a separate meeting, I don't remember what the date is.
Yeah.
I don't think I would, I think I'm still going to be out of town pretty close to following me.
Bill raised a point with me that may help you think about this. One of the things I can tell you is that the May agenda compared to this agenda is relatively light. You've continued one item to it, and I think there's one other item, but that's it. So that, that agenda is closed at this point, so.
Hmm, okay.
The May agenda shouldn't be as daunting as tonight's one.
And we are carrying over two of these items to the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, you're carrying over two, and I believe there's one more fresh one, so it's not going to be short.
But we can, we can put, set the agenda as published with the dune grading issue first.
You can push dune grading to the top to give you a fresher start at it, yeah. So that would be 5/24 then, the regular meeting. Other opinions on whether to have a special meeting?
I, I think we can get along without a special meeting. You know, the turnout tonight is a manageable size. And I think some of the same people will show up next week, but other people have an opportunity who weren't able to come tonight. And I think we ought to be able to handle it in a regular meeting. So I think we're coming down to an end here, I think.
Yeah. If we, so we continue this to May 24th, would it make sense then to go to June for a vote on this matter?
Yeah, but I, based on what I've heard so far, is I would not pull the trigger prematurely on that city council meeting in June. I just don't.
So then plan on July for the city council?
Well, tentatively, that's far enough out.
Yeah.
I can still think about it comfortably, but yeah, so your tentative schedule is looking like a hearing in May and perhaps a decision from you in June. A recommendation to the council would push us.
I would like it better because, I mean, obviously, I would have to sit down and talk first to you and all of Hannah about whether I can, I can work with her on.
In terms of looking down the road, what is likely to come up here. So, yeah, okay, we can do that.
That sounds like there's not a push to have additional meetings, so.
Okay. The other thing that Bill mentioned to me while we were paused there was one way you might, you might find helpful in framing this is to kind of chart of the issues, the substantive.
Please.
That you have to put up here.
Please, summary.
Kind of say what the various things that have come up on those are, not so much pros and cons, but there's, you know, there's alternatives in the Allen Report. There's testimony you've heard on those various points.
That would be very helpful.
We may not agree on much, but I think we do have broad agreement on what those elements are that you need to address. And if I can take a stab at summarizing those in sort of a matrix form, it might give you a tool to work through this a little more efficiently on.
How soon would we get that?
Probably a week before the hearing. Now that it's going to come out any earlier than that, I can anticipate it.
To me, this has been ridiculous, actually. The way we've been able to get this within the week and have to decipher it. I just think it's asking us to make a huge decision that's more important than that.
Well, for what little it's worth, I don't see for the next meeting, the only thing I would bring to the table then would be this matrix. So you have these documents in the current form, and just, even though you've identified some problems, and I've got to leave that alone until you've actually moved forward on some decisions or at least tentative direction on those points. It doesn't solve the problem, but at least it keeps it from growing.
And would you be able to give us some guidance? I'm still not seeing a connection between the ADA and dune shaving. I do see it for public access, obviously, that's clear. But for the, for the view enhancement, I'm not seeing that connection.
I haven't dug deep into this, but I tend to share your position as well, that the idea of whether to permit dune grading doesn't have a direct impact on ADA. I think what you're hearing is that the consequences of if you were to limit dune grading means that more accesses will be blocked and we're not going to be able to fix them. And so the question about dune grading in and of itself doesn't implicate ADA, but whether there's some indirect effect on the ability of the city to comply with the ADA.
But it's possible to make an access more accessible without, you know.
Yes.
Just grading that part of the access, you know, in other words, it's.
Yeah, no, there are.
Two separate, two separate apples and oranges.
I'm trying to think of the right analogy that where apples and oranges, you know, when you peel the orange, it has some impact on your apple. And, you know, that, I'm not making a good analogy, but yeah, I do think that they're separate, separate issues. There are some implications of, you know, if you limit dune grading, does that somehow affect your ability to maintain the accesses as close as I can get? And I just don't think that's necessarily the decision that you have in front of you unless what you, unless there is something in the code provision that said, you know, dune grading shall not be used to maintain beach access. Then I'd say you might stay away from that. But otherwise, I think it's a different program.
Just to throw another issue out that, that seems to have been overlooked in all of this, except in one point, where the goals for this management plan are outlined as being four, the third of which is to maintain valuable habitat for a wide range of plants and animals, including in some cases rare species. That goal doesn't get repeated elsewhere. Other of these goals do get repeated elsewhere under subsections of the, of the plan. And I'm kind of curious why that's not the case. And also, I'm curious whether we know what this wide range of plants and animals, including some cases rare species, what they actually are. Was any, was that ever established?
Two points there. One is, I absolutely agree with you. You're right, that goal should be carried forward through the rest of the planning documents and that it wasn't, is an oversight, and I think that should be corrected. The second point, do we have a strong inventory of what native plant, dune plant communities looked like when they existed? Not as an inventory, but we do have pretty good information about what native plant, dune plant communities do look like in places where they haven't changed, which is not Cannon Beach. So you could kind of by implication say, well, this is a similar climate, soil type, wind exposure. This is likely the native plant community that existed before European bleached grass overran. So we don't have it in terms of an in-house inventory for the bar beaches, but there is good information about what that plant community looks like.
Okay. And another sort of sub-issue related to that is much like Sand Island in the middle of Columbia that seems infested by terns, killing off small baby salmon coming down to try to reach their natural habitat in the Pacific. You can sit on the banks of the Columbia and watch these terns gobbling up fish after fish after fish. Well, those terns weren't there at one point until the Corps of Engineers built Sand Island in the middle of Columbia and found that it was a wonderful environment for terns and hungry terns. So I'm wondering if the habitat in this seemingly unnatural sand dune has attracted rare species or wanted species that weren't necessarily native there, but now they're rare and they are living there.
That's how nature is. It evolves. That's nature. That's their nature.
I know. I understand that, and that's kind of where protection of endangered species comes in. But, but it's an issue that really hasn't been dealt with in this document. And I'm particularly interested in that, and I, you know, that just struck me like that because, you know, unlike some of the humor that has been attached to worrying about clams on the beach in our various discussions, I'm partial to those damn clams. And, and I worry about running trucks up and down the beach, and I worry even more when we had a study before us, you know, when I think the first dune grading that I encountered on this commission, proposal that I encountered. Someone opposed to it brought in a study that, you know, was legit about how much sand you could pile on the, on the, on the beach before you killed off the razors. And I'd like to see something about that in here. And I tried to find the study and I couldn't find it, but it should be in the past records of this body. But if nothing else, you know, we go from these overall goals that we're going to balance against poor dune management to having, in the subsections of this document, changing goals, we're not talking about objectives. And the objectives, you know, include some of these goals, except for the one goal having to do with those poor little clams. And I want to see that come through. And I think there are other aspects to looking at that besides just worrying about the clams or ferrets or whatever, you know, whatever might be swirling around doing illegal things in the dunes.
On that note.
Smoking marijuana.
Are we ready for, go to the order? Oh, I'm going to find it.
Oh.
Nope.
I have one.
I got things too.
Okay, you go.
Want me to go?
Yeah.
So the city council has been scheduling all of its appointed committees one at a time to appear before them. You're up for the 5/8 council meeting. I'll make sure you all get notice of that and a copy of the staff report because one of the staff reports is a chance for you and the council to kind of sit at the table and just exchange views on how things are going, how things might be approved, that sort of thing. So that's 5/8, but I will get you a notice of that. The tree removal amendments that you considered and sent to the council, they heard some additional testimony that made them want to send it back to you for further consideration. I kept it off the agenda tonight, but it didn't need to be here and we didn't have time for it. And based on what I'm hearing, I may keep it off the May agenda too and put it on June unless I hear some different direction. There's no, it's good work and we do need to get it done, but there's no urgency clock ticking or anything like that, so I don't feel too bad about holding that back. And then finally, the affordable housing package that you voted down was also voted down by the city council, three to two vote. But since then, we had, council members have discussed with the city manager the possibility of bringing that back in a slightly different form. So I don't know if that's done yet, but that's still, right now, it's not on the May agenda, but it could be back before the city council in an altered form at some point in the future. Don't know what that would look like. I'm not even sure that that might happen.
You don't know what the alterations are or what they?
They haven't gotten that far. There's just a couple of them that expressed an interest. Maybe there's a way of tweaking this that would make it acceptable because it was a close vote at this city council, three to two. So that's still going. I'll keep you apprised of how that goes. I really don't have much more to tell you about it then.
Okay. And is the Nicholson?
I sent a letter to Jeff. I copied all of you on it. He actually got back to me pretty promptly. I haven't had much time to go through that or talk to him and ask for a couple, a little bit more information on one point. And he promised he would get me a hard schedule for the replanting sometime next week. Not that he's going to do the replanting next week, but he'd give me a firm schedule.
But what about the, I mean, the, what about the wall?
Excuse me, not replanting, vegetation.
Oh, and what about the damage to trees? What do you saw about that?
I talked to him about that. He said the work on trees for now, any work on the site is over right now, and there was further work to be done. We'd be checking in ahead of time.
And what about the pile of rubble?
He told me what that was. I didn't enter the site to look at it.
Is that all the, the old wood he's going to reuse?
Some of it is salvage wood, and I'm going to tell you can't stack it on the ground.
It'll be rotten by the time he gets to it.
So we're, I actually felt good that he got back quickly and seemed to take the letter pretty seriously. We're working forward on that, and I'll just keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Well, it needed to have been done a while ago, and I think, sorry, the Amis' aren't here because.
But there's no punishment.
Really, it was Rex and Diane's email that finally said, okay, this has to go to the top of the list.
And there's no, there's no, you know, there's no sanctions or punishment. He just gets kind of like to disregard his contract, which is really what it was, is a contract. So he broke the terms of his contract and all he's getting is a slap on the hand, well, you better not do that. I mean, I'm just wondering, is there any other mechanism or is that the way it works?
That, it's not the way it necessarily works. Generally, I'm more interested in compliance than in fines, but that, we haven't pushed that off the table. Like, that's not an alternative we've thrown out, we don't hear yet either. My recommendation is going to be is if we can move him towards compliance, we're better off doing that than fining him.
Well, can we just, can that be on the agenda on May 8th when we talk to the council?
Um, yeah, absolutely.
Just that in general?
Yeah.
Like if you make a contract with the council and then break it, will you, will there be any kind of punishment imposed or, you know?
That's fair game for your discussion.
I wonder if.
Has he sold off all the pieces?
Sold one of the lots, I believe.
So who's responsible for that?
Two?
Did you get a commission on this?
Absolutely not. No.
You look so happy about it, that's why.
Well, it's interesting because it was an exclusion to the listing and the people who had the exclusion purchased it, so, and they're going to, from what I hear, leave it the way it is. I mean, have it be natural.
That's what I've been told, too.
Okay.
So these are the two lots on the south side of the property that have been sold.
Somebody just bought these so they could just leave them?
No, they bought one of them. The other one was sold on the market.
Yeah.
Somebody bought it as a potential building site. They've had some discussions with them about their plans, but they're not very far advanced yet.
So who's responsible for that wall?
When the property is, well, the owners are responsible for the wall. They have an agreement amongst the four property owners that they'll share maintenance costs of it.
How about, how about planting it?
Planting is the responsibility of the owners. Jeff Nicholson still is enough of an owner there. You know, it's two of the remaining lots that he's responsible for that hasn't even been done yet. Whether he wants to try and assess the other owners is certainly not mine.
He had a contract, basically, saying it would be done within one year, and it wasn't. So, I mean, he, he was responsible six months ago for having that done and didn't do it.
I don't know about that.
Well, I've seen it. I mean, you just see, you can see.
I just got sent them, the emails passed on to everybody.
Yeah.
I'll keep you apprised of anything that changes on that, and that's certainly fair game to bring up with the city council.
Ready to the order? Lynn, did you have something? Were you just showing that to me or were you, did you come to present?
No, no, that was about trees. It was something else.
Oh, okay.
I came just because I wanted to be informed of that.
Okay. Anything else? Return.